Court will come to order. It is Monday, August the 25th, 2025. It's nine o'clock in the morning and the Kerr County Commissioners Court is now in session. If you would, please stand for the prayer and pledge which I will lead. Let's start with a moment of silence and then I'll lead us out in prayer. Good and gracious God, we stand in the shadow of this horrific disaster trusting in you and grieving for our lost victims and their families. We pray that you, in the power of your Holy Spirit, to comfort their hearts and souls and ours as we grieve with them. We ask that you help each of us deal with our grief and our loss, whether it be monetary, material, emotional, spiritual. We invite you to shine the light of your Holy Spirit into each of our hearts and to their hearts and show us the way back into the sunlight. We ask that you send the power of the Holy Spirit to rekindle the fire of your love in our hearts, that you lead us not into temptation but deliver us from evil, for yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever and ever. Amen.
Amen.
Joining the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Please be seated. Heavy hearts today. First thing I'm going to ask you to do is to adjust these things. You can turn them off or turn them to vibrate. Please do not let them interrupt the proceedings. And we start, as we usually do on our regular Commissioners Court meetings, with public input. This is an opportunity for us to hear your input. Unfortunately, we are not authorized to give our output back to you at that time because that's not what's on the agenda. We ask that those of you that want to speak on something that is on the agenda, save your remarks and your time, the three minutes that you're limited to, to that agenda item rather than trying to get everybody up for the public input. We've got a lot of people that have signed up to speak today and we have people upstairs, as I understand it. And we want to make sure that everybody has an opportunity to express their opinions. So what we're going to do now is if you want to speak about something that is not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to speak. We ask you to go to the podium, identify yourself in which precinct you reside in, and limit your remarks to not more than three minutes. And our county clerk is our timekeeper. When you hear it go off, you would please politely depart the podium. So with that, I have two people that have signed up for public comments. Helen Hurd. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. I got it right this time. I wanted to issue an invitation to all of the first responders in Kerr County. A Republican member of the State Republican Executive Committee has organized and funded a complimentary luncheon at the Wild Ranch Hotel this coming Saturday, August the 30th. Please, if you can come, I've given each of the Commissioners some invitations to, yes, sir?
We better.
To copy and spread at will. I ask only that you are RSVP, so we have a head count. There'll be a lot of politicians there. I know Chip Roy has confirmed. There'll be some other surprises, so it should be a wonderful, wonderful time. And we just want to say thank you to all of the first responders in Kerr County. Second thing is the Kerr County Republican Party on Monday, Labor Day, September the first, is having a rally at the old Wells Fargo Bank Building at Five Points. We'll be in the east parking lot grilling free hot dogs. We'll serve those with chips and soft drinks. And then there'll be some games for the kids. There'll be old cars to look at and some Trump swag for purchase, Commissioner Paces. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, over the public comment, we have Audrey Burner.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Audrey Burner from Kerr County. There are heroes and leaders who are involved in the catastrophic flooding that occurred on July 4th and who continue to lead in the ongoing far-reaching aftermath. Many of these heroes and leaders were from other parts of Texas and all, from all over our great country. Many will go unrecognized simply because there were so many assisting and because the tragedy was so catastrophic. I want to recognize and thank two incredible leaders we are blessed to have in this county, Commissioner Holt and Commissioner Paces. Personally, I did not immediately realize the incredible loss and complete devastation our county sustained. Once I did, I reached out to Commissioners Holt and Commissioner Paces, asking how we could assist. Commissioner Holt responded and immediately put my husband and I to work. I believe Commissioner Holt leapt into action around 5:00 a.m. on July 4th. He simply so responded as a true leader does. He strapped on his gear and dove headfirst into the chaos, assisting anywhere and everywhere he could. I did not have as much communication with Commissioner Paces early on, but I'm incredibly confident that he did the same, strapped on his gear and dove headfirst into the chaos. I don't believe either of these incredible men thought about themselves at all during this intense drama and horrific devastation. I believe their main concern was getting people out of harm's way and rescuing people. Eventually, their concern turned to recovering those bodies who had perished. Both of these men gave selflessly and led by example in assisting our loved ones, our neighbors, and assisting the strangers who had come to the Hill Country to enjoy the Independence Day. Just a couple of weeks ago, Commissioner Paces was still out shoveling silt, chainsawing, and removing debris from some of our fellow neighbors' yards. I don't believe that either of these men wanted me to stand up here and recognize them and thank them publicly. Sorry. What I found throughout all of this is that our phenomenal game wardens, our Border Patrol, our troopers, our own incredible Sheriff Letha, his phenomenal men and women, our firefighters, these courageous men and women do not want recognition. They simply have this God-given courage and desire to help their fellow man. There are countless numbers of leaders and heroes who have come and gone, who will never fully realize how blessed they were, how blessed we are just to have had them to assist us. You men will never know or realize or receive the recognition and thanks that y'all deserve. Please know there are countless numbers of us who have and will continue praying for y'all. Philippians 2, 3, and 4 says, "Do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather in humility, value others above yourself, not looking to your own interests, but each of you to the interests of others." You men exemplify these words. Thank y'all for being the leaders here that y'all are. May God continue to bless Texas and may God continue to bless America. Thank y'all. Thank you, Sheriff Letha.
Okay, those are the only two public input. Is there anyone else for public input?
Mr. Broody. I guess I'll just walk in. Okay, George Broody, 1616 Glen Road. Don't really have much to say. I just have a question. I know you're talking a lot about the budget later. This regards that, but it's more of a housekeeping thing. The first page of the proposed budget is the, was it, truth in taxation page? It tells you, you know, you raise more revenue from property taxes, blah, blah, blah. I'm trying to reconcile that with the actual numbers in the budget and I'm having trouble doing that. So if you don't mind, in the approved budgets, you normally publish the, what do you call it, tax rate worksheet that Bob Rees fills out. If you could publish that online somewhere, that would be really helpful. It would allow somebody to review this stuff and make heads or tails out of it because as the proposed budget states, it's saying you're raising the revenue by seven point something percent. And according to everything you guys are saying, you're not. So I'm trying to figure out which is right. So if you could just publish that, that'd be great because I'm sure somebody besides me wants to see it. If you can't publish it, then please contact me on my phone number and find out how I can get to that. It's on that sheet.
Do we have a form?
Yeah, I put in a form.
I thought you wanted to speak on like 1.30.
I put two items. It said public.
Okay.
Okay, all right. So, and that's all. Thank you.
Any other public input?
That's it.
That's it?
Yes.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to Commissioners' comments. Precinct one.
Not a lot to say this morning, Judge. We've got a whole lot going on today, so I'd like to counter reserve our time for the court.
Sure do. Two.
All right, well, we're continuing the door-to-door welfare checks and damage assessments and, of course, trying to match needs with resources. Fortunately, there aren't a lot of resources. So we've got two teams helping with this effort, one in Center Point led by Christie Richards and another covering other parts of Kerrville and beyond led by Robbie Pedophils. Last week, I completed my survey of the aggregate mine flood impact along the Guadalupe River, and I'm working with those miners to estimate the volume of water that was diverted from the river into their pits. Also made contact with Texas Park and Wildlife to look into their permit process for the removal of some of the new gravel deposits that are sitting right there in the river flood plain. Basically, the impact of the flood will be the sole topic for discussion in the next APO Advisory Council meeting scheduled for September 16th. Just not sure where that's going to be yet. Probably the Union Church. We also met with the East Kerr Center Point Repair and Recovery Committee to discuss plans for Lyons Park restoration. And I'll just comment that debris removal is going extremely well. However, there have been a couple requests from some of my constituents to get access to some of the mulch that comes out of that process. And all I can say is that's been looked into by my fellow Commissioners who are serving on the EOC, and it's been made pretty clear that's not possible. Those contracts were already awarded and they're quite specific. It's up to those Ashbrit and Sures. And, you know, it's just not possible. But we are so grateful that the state is picking up the tab for all the debris removal. And I think they're way ahead of schedule. They're doing a phenomenal job. But to try to accommodate everybody's request for mulch is just not practical and doesn't save money, it adds money. And frankly, they're taking the debris off to I don't care where. And I don't care what they do with it. If they sell it, make a profit, or if they burn it, it doesn't even matter. It's such a gift from the state to handle this for us because we couldn't do it. And lastly, I would like to have done this as a separate agenda item, but it got dropped. So I'm going to give a quick Hill Country Energy Subregional Planning Commission update. Our next board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, September 3rd, here in this courtroom at 1:00 p.m. A little bit of an update. We sent a fourth notice calling for a coordination meeting with LCRA. It's available on our website, as is the letter they sent to the AG's office requesting support for their intention to decline the release of information that Kendall County Commissioner Jennifer McCall made regarding best facilities in both Kendall and Kerr Counties. You know, LCRA originally told us they're a political subdivision of the state and not a sub-state agency subject to Chapter 391. But the letter their counsel sent to the Office of the Attorney General, Open Records Division, they also said in that letter that they are a local government entity and as such is within the purview of provisions of Chapters 418, 421. Later in the same letter, they stated that LCRA is a government body defined in Chapter 552 of the Texas Code. So, you know, we're going to get a separate legal opinion, but there can be no doubt that they are a government agency and they are subject to Chapter 391 by their own words. So they really need to just attend a coordination meeting with our Subregional Planning Commission, which they're required to do by law. And I guess the last thing is the Kendall County Commissioners Court, which meets tomorrow, has an item on their agenda to discuss Gillespie County's request to join our Subregional Planning Commission. And I'm reasonably confident that they will approve that. That's all.
Great.
First of all, for Audrey and Jeff Burner, thank you for those compliments. It's surprising for today, but grateful. The question we always struggle with is, have I done enough? Have you? Have we? As anyone who's been through this before, it's often the question that we ask. What's coming next? What do I do next? How do I help out? And there's plenty of faces in here that are part of that. And I'm very grateful for all of your collective efforts into how we recover. And what I've seen from the Senate bill and the House bills recently is some really strong leadership from our state. So we have to understand what that means for us with those House bills like 306 and Senate Bill 3 and Senate Bill 1 that have all come out and how we help recover for that. I know our UGRA partners are here today and will be a large part of that process. It is still raining. I did get about two inches from last Commissioners Court over on Cypress Creek. And so things are looking green as the earth tries to reset itself after two years of drought. And if you look at historic, you kind of see that after a large drought, large amounts of rain. The question is, what's coming next and how do we prepare for it? And after-action report is a big part of that, and it's being dictated not only by the state, but it's also been introduced by me previously. And then also Commissioner Paces has offered to help out that. It's going to be something we need to do. However dramatic it is in uncovering certain things, we need to look at ourselves hard in the face. And I'm used to doing that in my previous life. And I think we're going to do that here, too. And I'm grateful. Lastly, I did give one burn exemption for those that asked for it in our precinct, and it was a well-executed plan. I'm grateful for the constituent. And we do have several people we're working with, with ranchers. And just to plug out there again, there are some ranch materials available locally. If you shouldn't need them for your fence and you haven't come to us yet along the river and you still need some, we definitely have some fencing material for repair. I know, now I know everyone's not in love with logs that are not cedar or metal. I didn't know that was a thing, but I've realized that it is now. And we do have plenty of logs available. Just saying that are treated, not necessarily cedar or metal. So there we go. Thank you.
Before you start, Donna, I'm just going to echo that that information is available on my Facebook page, and it's also available at Depreed Tech, at least the one that's in Center Point at the VFD. So there's information both on the USDA and their grant program for fence repair and restoration, as well as the fencing materials that are available for free.
Thank you. All right. I'll be short. We've got a huge, huge agenda, but I just want to add on to what Mrs. Burner said, that it's humbling how many people rolled up their sleeve and jumped in the thing, from federal to state, also the volunteers that came from anywhere and everywhere across our nation. Many of you sitting out here I know had big roles to play and are still playing them. And so we can't, we always leave somebody out. The VFDs, my gosh, the first ones on the ground and helped throughout all this. All of them. Even the ones that weren't quite affected, they jumped in, even though their district wasn't on the river. It's truly humbling. I will point out something coming up this Saturday at Criders. They cleaned the place up and they're having a dance and meal from 7:00 to 10:00, and it's called community gathering. So I think that's, that'd be a good thing to try to get out and see people. Put it on your calendar. I think that'd be rewarding. So that's all I got, Judge.
Are we going to give an update on debris?
Let me give a brief one, I guess.
Then I'll increase it.
Okay, good. As of Saturday, you know, the overall look at debris was huge. And they, our contractors estimate they've gotten about 25% so far. You know, there's still a lot out there, but it's going extremely fast. Everybody sees the trucks. I know Saturday they had over 80 trucks running. So it's really, they're really doing a good job. And you want to add to that.
Yeah, between the two contractors, Sures and Ashbrit and Tex dot, they have picked up 497.7 cubic yards. So that's a lot.
That's hard to comprehend. That's like six football, 32 football fields, I think, six foot high of debris, if you can relate to that. It's still astronomical.
At no cost.
And I will tell you, about 20 years ago, there was a big mulch pile, about three stories high in Helotis, Texas. And it caught fire. It burned for a year, smoldered for a year. So we don't want that stuff stockpiled here. We want them taken to San Antonio and Austin and getting rid of it.
A few things that I would add is, number one, with regard to debris, and, Mr. Paces, you are right. This is not at the county expense. It would have bankrupted the county, undoubtedly.
Or we'd look at it forever.
Or we just wouldn't have done it.
And the estimated amount of debris, I got this straight from them kids' mouth, is 1.3 million cubic yards. And we've got about 500 of it done. It's going to take a while.
Judge, can I make, are you off on debris? Can I make a comment about debris when we're in a public comment?
Sure.
In your precinct.
Thank you, Jonathan Lass. 1656 Lane Valley. On the debris removal, I just want to bring up something, and it's going to be addressed and something I'm kind of leading right now. The repair and recovery along the river is critical for the long-term success of the river. It goes to tourism, economic development, everything you can imagine. And I've been in contact with Zach Hood with Tidham, and he is working along with Hill Country Alliance and Texas Parks and Wildlife to come out with some guidance to the contractors to not clean every piece of debris. Hopefully, they'll do that. Some of that debris is critical to be left. Obviously, the bulk we're talking about needs to go, hauled off. And that is a blessing that the state's paying for that. But cleaning, there's some areas I've seen where they're just scraping down the dirt every bit. And that is not the way that it needs to be done right next to the river. And there's some guidance that Hill Country Alliance has, UGRA has it, Parks and Wildlife has it, on really the best ways to recover that repairing area.
Just the rite of entries. We might want to push that a little bit.
I was going to touch on that. Thank you. One of the things I wanted to share that I learned from Nim Kid, and if y'all haven't worked with Nim Kid, he's probably one of the finest leaders I've ever worked for. Truly an exceptional human being. But he says, in a disaster, there are three disasters within the disaster. And the first time I heard this, I didn't really understand it. You know, you hear these things and it didn't quite sink in. But there's the event. We prayed about the event today. That's a disaster. The second disaster is a mental health disaster, not only for the people that we lost or their families, but for the rest of us that have been affected by this, whether you were directly affected on the water through the recovery, through whatever way. And like with my wife, who watched the river run in her front yard, she's going to counseling and trying to deal with that. And it's kind of like a fog or days. and trying to deal with that, and it's kind of like a fog or daze. You know, I don't know officially what PTSD looks like, but it affects us. But don't forget that mental health is, that is still in our community. Now, you're probably thinking, what's the third? We're going to talk about that today. It's the money. It's the money. So, the event, the mental health of the people, and the money. And Tom, you want to add something about the right of entries?
Yeah, the right of entries.
Is for private property owners.
Ties into what Jonathan Lesz was talking about, too. The right of entries for people to come into the property to be able to access a cleanup. Just so y'all are updated on the numbers, they've got 549 that were received, 534 that were verified, 528 approved, 46 are completed, and 72 were closed out. So, there's still a lot of work to be done. Those right of entries are extremely important to understand. The contractors are having some struggle in the far east portion of Kerr County, probably larger ranchers, but they do need permission. You can be there to monitor what they do. It should be. It's your property. And if you're wanting to leave something for riparian repair, that's the time to do it, to make sure they understand where you're at and what you want to accomplish there. So, if your neighbors are not around, please get ahold of them, get those forms filled out. That's extremely important on this cleanup, debris cleanup.
And it's really easy. You go to the debris tech trailers. There's one at the Center Point VFD, and there's one at the Ingram VFD.
Lock down.
You sign up there. It's very easy, but you have to convey your permission for people to enter your property to remove that debris.
And they will contact you. They're not just going to show up at your place and enter without your notice. You know, they're going to call you and say, hey, we'd like to come out Tuesday or whatever. So, they're going to contact you, so they're going to work with you. And they've, you know, we haven't had any complaints yet. I mean, they've done an excellent job. They put the best foot forward.
Okay.
Just curious how we get to worry off the people that are out of state that are current residents.
Have them go to our website. That'd be the best way. Okay, we have, first item on the agenda, we have a number of people that want to talk about that. So, we'll move on to item 1.1 on the agenda, which is to consider discussing, take appropriate action on a request from the residents of Ingram to drain Ingram Lake. And the first person that I have down here to speak is John Dunn. Is that correct?
Yeah, John turned in the form first. He did it before.
Oh, pardon. Pardon, I couldn't find you.
And I'll probably be the briefest, so let me go.
Okay. He turned it in at 8:03 a.m.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. I actually want to mention a couple of things, but I will finish up on the river. First, want to acknowledge what we just were talking about, the incredible job with the debris removal. Being a Hunt resident, I can tell you, it's sunup to sundown, trucks going all day long. And I think it's worth acknowledging that, the way I understand it, this is the first time it's ever happened this way, to where the feds are funding the state and the county for the debris removal. So, this never has happened before. As a survivor of Harvey, I will tell you, one of the more depressing things is debris sitting around the sidewalks and driveways, okay? The fact that it got removed as quick as it has, Bumblebee is a perfect example of how they got in and they mucked out very quickly. They got the debris out of the neighborhood very quickly, and they're waiting to rebuild, okay? We'll talk about that. Also, want to acknowledge the Community Foundation. We just kind of take them for granted, but they're the ones with the money. I think they're doing a great job of getting it into the hands of the communities up and down the river. I speak for Hunt, but I do believe they're working well with Ingram, Center Point, Comfort, and all the communities affected. So, thank you, Austin. Thank you, Community Foundation. The big challenge, as I see it, is, and I know this isn't river subject, but it touches on it, the county catching up with some residents and businesses. Not a fault of the county being behind. I don't think anybody expected the residents and businesses to be to the point where they are, ready to rebuild so quickly, okay? Once again, you look at Bumblebee, you have residents there that are just ready to go. The good news is, I do know there's relief coming through the county and through the Kerr Economic Development Center and a task force that I understand is being put together. I encourage the county to fund that as aggressively as they can. The long-term recovery for all of the county is going to depend on this task force and how they can work and facilitate resources and expedite resources to the community. So, Community Foundation funds coming through this task force to get to the community foundations or the community centers as quickly as possible. If we can put that in place, I think we can catch up and do something that's never been done before, as far as the speed of the recovery and rebuild. On the river, I just encourage you to look at it closely. I do understand there's environmental concerns. Please try to quantify what those are. I can tell you the environmental, or excuse me, the economic impact. If we don't restore the river to total public confidence, it'll be devastating to the economy, okay? That we know. I'm not dismissing the environmental concerns. I just ask that we really try to quantify and understand what are we doing? Let's be sure we're not trying to pole vault over in that situation that's really not worthy of disrupting public confidence in our waterways.
Okay.
Thank you.
Time's up.
That's all I got.
That was kind of not on-the-agenda item.
But he's a rookie.
But, well, no, John Dunn is in the heart of this thing, and our heart goes out to you, and thank you for the information. I'm going to do something a little different. We've got a timed item. I know you're ready to start. I know you're ready to start. But we do have a timed item at 9:15 that we need to go ahead and get out of the way. We're already 20 minutes past that.
There's also a timed item, Judge.
Oh, this one?
This one.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, it is.
Fair enough. You're right.
Okay, Ms. Eitman.
Hi there. Good morning. My name is Lauren Eitman. I'm a proud resident of Ingram, Texas. Please consider, discuss, and take appropriate action on the request from the residents of Ingram to drain Ingram Lake. The company I work for, Gold's Gem, they donated $20,000 to the Kerrville Flood Relief about two to three weeks ago. So, thank you, Gold's Gem. Just had to give a little plug there. Also, thank you for your time. I seize the remainder of my time to Ann Carr.
Okay, you got that?
Got that.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for allowing us to come back and speak. Before I get kind of to the heart of the matter, why we are here today, I want to address two statements that were published in the Kerrville Daily Times this past weekend. And unlike what Ms. Gilstrap wrote in her article, we are not here today to speak about water recreation. Although important to our city, today we are here to discuss the matter of finding the missing and to respectfully remove all human remains from our lake. We're here to speak about removing all debris, which includes automobiles and travel trailers. We also must remove all hazardous material, which includes building materials, kitchen appliances, and toxic items like car batteries. Another assertion I'd like to refute from the paper is that we want the lake drained immediately. We know that in order to protect our Cypress trees, we must wait until at least October, November, for these trees to go dormant. We also understand that Kerrville's water treatment plant needs time to build up its reserves. This two-month window we are seeking will allow for both of these matters to be taken care of. Having said all of this, we're in a time crunch, and there are permits to be pulled. We understand that. There's endangered species that need to be set aside, and being a member of the GBR A will provide the protection we need to save us from these costly fines by these environmentalists. At this time, I'd like for my husband, David, to go ahead and present to y'all 26 packets. He's stuck in his book, honey. Attention! There we go. He's there. We've got 26 packets of signed petitions by 26 small business owners in Ingram, Texas. Now, as y'all know, Ingram, Texas has a population of little over 1,800 people. So, in 10 days, along with our online petition, we received over 650 signatures. We have a Facebook page, which has been dedicated to saving our lake and raising public awareness of the condition of New Ingram Lake and the Guadalupe River. In less than two weeks, we've had over 13,000 people visit our page. The petitions we just handed over to you started by me going to our city limits, armed with clipboards, just like this. And I began to make my way through the city, and each business that I went into wanted these packets. There were two that said, "No, thank you." But other than that, everybody wanted these packets, and everybody had stories to tell me. And the stories all revolved around what was happening to their, to their customer base. Places like The Creek told me that they don't have counselors coming in, they don't have campers coming in, they don't have families. And they told me that they are probably not going to be able to make it another summer without that river being cleaned and with our lake being drained and people feeling confident that our water is safe. They're not dipping any toes in that water, regardless of what the UGRA says.
Was that what Seaton does?
So, it's important that we get this lake drained, not only for public safety, but for our businesses. And without that money coming in to your, to our coffers, y'all are going to come, start coming to us to make up the deficit. We've probably got, I don't know, on our meeting Saturday, we had well over 100 people that were in attendance to our meeting, and these are people that are on fixed incomes. Yes, sir?
Your time has expired.
Okay. Well, real quick, I'm just calling on the President of the United States to come and help us out, and Governor Abbott. They made a lot of promises to us, and President Trump is the only man that can waive these environmental laws and that can get, we can get to work and we can clean our lake so that we can restore it and revive our economy. Thank you again for letting me speak.
Kathy Simmons?
Yes, sir. Judge, Commissioners, thank you. Kathy Simmons, 120 Ella Lang, Ingram, Texas. I'm here today to urgently request the court's action to drain and clean the lake. These are, the urgency stems from three critical escalating threats. First, our public water are a death threat. Ingram Lake and Guadalupe are choked with submerged vehicles, RVs, twisted metal, massive trees. And these aren't just inconveniences. These are strainers. They trap and drown recreational users. They're hazardous, they're hazardous hidden causes for boating accidents, a leading cause of boating accidents fatalities nationwide, cost about one, a half a million dollars to $2 million per incident, and that's something that the court will have to take on. Second, our rivers are bleeding toxins. Residents are already smelling foul-smelling bubbles arising from the submerged vehicles, confirming continuing release of gasoline, diesel oil, antifreeze, and battery acids into our primary source of water. Compounded with decomposing livestock carcasses contributed to the passive agent E. coli, which decreases the oxygen level in our lakes, who's going to give a direct threat to our Guadalupe bass and the mussels that we so protect. Finally, is the economic hemorrhaging, and the inaction is devastating. The flood has already caused an estimated $18 to $22 million in regional economic losses and a $240 million local property appraisal reduction. Our tourism industry, which supports local jobs and generates an estimated $14 million annual revenue, is at severe risk. The 2025 Kerrville triathlon has already been canceled. Summer camps are questioning whether they're going to reopen again, and our fishing guides have no clients. 500 to 100 million of pre-flood property values around Ingram Lakes are deteriorating daily. And if we do nothing, our tourism economic, economy will collapse. Property values will continue to plummet. Our tax base will shrink, forcing us to raise taxes to maintain just basic needs. But there's good news. The President of the United States declared a declaration on July 6th unlocking federal funds that can cover 75 to 90% of eligible costs that are likely to raise, to reduce our copay in addition to that. The federal, the federal government, after Harvey, paid $223 million to clean up the sediment and clear the waterways in Harris County. Harris County only paid $6 million of that. Our federal tax dollars are coming back here to help us off. Am I done? Dang it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. David Carr.
Somebody mute that timer? All right. Thank you. Hello, Judge, Commissioners, and everybody in the room and upstairs. I live in Ingram. I'm David Carr. Our riverfront was destroyed. We all know about the RV trailers, et cetera. That's belaboring the issue. But we met Saturday with over 100 people in Ingram on Saturday, and microbiologists. I didn't realize we had biologists. I didn't realize we had researchers in this local area. I'm, I am just one of many. I'm an environmental engineer for the Army Corps of Engineers, and I cannot speak for them today, but I can speak for the community and all the people that are interested in drain, in draining the Ingram Lake, the New Ingram Lake. But we're here not just saying we need to drain it. We have a comprehensive plan that we have provided to the court with help from our local people that is chock full. We provide the cost for pros and cons for hydraulic dredging, and we offer thoughts on not draining, not only draining the lake, but what if we don't drain the lake? We have those thoughts. We have, we have a list of environmental pros, environmental threats, and we have a list of public threats in this proposed plan that we provided to you. We gave, I hope, the Commissioners the executive summary of that as well. So, we're not stopping our drumbeat to drain the lake, but we know it takes time. And yes, the three disasters inside the disasters, very, very, thank you for providing that, sir. That was great. It is there, and it's going to take time. We're, we're here. We're here to help. If we can, we will. I hope you use our report as a reference, if nothing else, as a supplement. It has numbers in there, et cetera. It's toxic. Our Lake Ingram feeds into Kerrville, Nimitz, so it, whatever's in there is going to keep going downstream, toxic, toxicity, turbidity, et cetera. We call it Project Guadalupe Revival. We need a revival. And I'm thinking of Psalms 29 right now, "The Lord is my light, and who shall I be afraid?" So, we have a lot of enemies around us, enemies, you call it whatever you want, but we have obstacles in our way. So, let's set the table. Let's let the table get prepared in the presence of our enemies. Let's focus. We're on assignment. We don't get to quit. We don't have a choice. We're right here, right now. Let's keep going, drain the lake, clean it up, and let's be proactive and save New Ingram Lake. If we do that, we'll also save the Guadalupe. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me thank you for doing that on time. Trying to get back to where we, what I did with the agenda. Okay. Anything else on that topic?
I do. Yeah. First, y'all's input is very valuable, and thank you very much for y'all taking the time and organizing and doing what you're doing. And along with everything else, the major concern going forward will be the economic input that we have here, right? Everybody wants this back to where it was. That'll never happen to get back to where it was, but we would all love to see that. But there's a couple of things that I think y'all probably are not aware of that I'd like to help you with. The state has been using the side scan sonar. They have been up and down Ingram Lake, and there are no vehicles in there. That's a fact, not a guess. It's a fact. There are no vehicles in there. There's trees, there's stumps, there's debris that needs to be removed.
There's trees, there's stumps, there's debris that needs to be removed. It will be removed. They're already setting up probably to, to set up the excavators that they have, the barges. That's what we're working on going forward right now. That has to take place first. There will be probably a couple of month timeframe for that to all get approved and set in place and be able to go in and extract that. That has to be done with extreme caution and care because we need to remember what several of y'all mentioned to begin with. The primary focus here is still recovery. That has got to remain first and foremost on our minds with nothing but honor and respect for these families. That's got to be first. And I know we would like to jump back to pre-flood, but it won't happen until this part of this is completed. And that's got to take place. So when you talk about a two-month timeframe, that would be great if we were set in place and ready to move forward, but we're not there. We have to allow them to complete this portion, this phase of this project and see what we can do to, to complete this recovery process. Now, that's just Ingram Lake. But there, there are not, and I'm sure that there are toxins to some degree. Maybe our friends over here from UGRA can help some, answer some of that. I don't test that water myself. Anytime you have a turnover with that, you're going to have those gases and those bubbles coming up. That's just a natural cause. You're going to have that. But, but I will tell you that they are doing a great service to help us with this. In regards to draining the lake, if, if they do this phase of the recovery and they don't come up with what we're searching for there, that is their next option from the discussions I had with them as of Saturday. Because we're still meeting six days a week over here. And as of Saturday, that is still on the table. It's not possible to look at that today because today we have to keep in mind that they need to go in and methodically remove the debris in their search and recovery. And so we have to respect that process going forward. Regardless of what we want, regardless of how it impacts us economically, regardless of anything else, we have to give every, every effort for recovery. That's just the way it's got to be. And I don't know of anybody in here that would disagree with that.
Yeah.
I hope. And, and if that turns up dry and we don't do any good, then the next phase most likely would be to drain that lake. So nobody's ruling that out. All y'all's hard, hard work is very appreciated. I read those reports. They've got some great ideas in them. And, and I will, and Don and I both will, will sit down with the state because Don and I are the team that's working out at the EOC. And we'll sit down with the state and we'll go over these and show them what y'all presented respectfully and, and see where their ideas are with that. But when we partnered with them, it's the best thing, I think, one of you guys said, that's probably the best thing that happened to us, or Don.
No doubt.
It, it took that burden, financial burden off of us because the next thing you're going to want to do is say, "Let's drain the lake, but don't raise our taxes." Right? Those two comments don't work together.
$6 million.
So we do have to work with our state partners through this. And they're doing a phenomenal job, and they're watching this, I'm sure. And they're hearing your comments too. And so they will, they will take all of this into consideration, just as this court will. But the careful, respectful, methodical method that we use in removal of that debris right now is the most important thing. But I did verify that even if those remains were to be found, they would continue with that removal of that debris. So that's going to take place. And all that has to be done. I'm, I'm hoping that at some point we get where we can. Draining the lake, I do realize the importance of it. So thank y'all very much.
That's an excellent job. Summarizing what our conversations, and believe me, we've taken a lot of your, your concerns to Task Force One and the State Police. And they said absolutely going in and removing the debris with, they call it clamshells and different things, on, on barges, getting it out of there is the best way for recovery. And, and because we said, "Why don't we just drain it and, and run the dogs through it and figure it out?" They said, "No. When you pull, when you start draining that thing, it disturbs everything." It's much better, and with the technology they have these days, they can pinpoint down to a stick, you know, what's in there. And so they convinced me. And so y'all are in charge.
Yeah, we've seen the sonars, and it shows a very clear picture of that entire river.
Right.
I would ask just for one thing, is we need to prove to the public, where is the material? Where is the metal? We've done that with the human bodies, and they've been very accurate. I'm grateful that they understand that. And it's law enforcement sensitive data. But in the same respect of after action, we should know every vehicle, every RV, every mobile home, because they all have a frame that goes with it. And we need to kind of prove that we know where all that material has gone because it has either been recovered or it's still not. Now, home is a little bit different. We saw a few floating homes, we all know that. But the large, heavy metal framed objects, I, I would ask as our representatives to get that number and start tabulating cars, RVs, and mobile homes that have been recovered so we can take that off the list and not wonder where it's at. And that, that's not disturbing anything, that's just good paperwork.
Majority of your RVs and stuff were below Ingram.
Went over the dam.
I just, yeah, we need to probably publish that and release that so people understand.
And that's a good point. Because I want to remind everybody here that the county has three lakes. We also have Flat Rock Lake, and we have Lyons behind the Lyons Dam. And I can assure the public and my constituents that, that I've been a thorn in the side, particularly of this guy, because, because I enjoy that. But asking for him to make star requests and do everything possible so that we can drain all the lakes, including Flat Rock and Lyons, because we have the same issues and concerns with those other lakes that you have in Ingram. And a lot of that stuff went right on downstream. A lot of bodies were recovered in the Center Point area and downstream from that. So who knows?
They're still running the sonars. If you, if y'all noticed on Friday, I think it was, I looked in, in Flat Rock, it looked like a, a six-wheel ATV in the river. And it's moving just extremely slow, and that's what they're doing, that's what that is.
Running grids.
It's a side, side scan sonar, and they're running grids through that. Extremely slow, and they're completely mapping out this river.
I, I think this court understands, and, and we've been intending to do something about all three lakes in terms of draining them. That's why we signed a memorandum of agreement with the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority to start studying in preparation for eventual draining these lakes. And, and there's quite a bit of study that goes into it and the permit process. So that was already, you know, back in April, I think it was, when, when we heard that and, and decided to move forward. But obviously, if we can accelerate it and get somebody else to pay for it, boy, nothing like it.
Well, Commissioner, you know, you mentioned our three lakes, but we're also, the city has limits, and that's in play as well.
And I'm sure they have the same concerns.
Yes, exactly. Absolutely.
I have a question. So we, we do get to draining the lakes. Is there a process that, which area to start with? You start upstream and work your way down?
If, if they, if they were to drain the lake and, and we get to that portion, the, probably the simplest way, the most effective way to where it doesn't have a plunge effect and suck the lake dry and, and do that and create all the turbidity that would, that would shut down that water plant, we would most likely set up a bunch of large pumps, and it would take a while to pump it all out and divert the water.
Would you start upstream?
I would, I would guess they'd start at the dam. We have the ability right now to lift a gate and drop the dam about five feet.
Ingram?
In Ingram Dam.
That's, that's the thought now, but that can change. But that, right now, that would, looks like how it would happen. But boy, they may change their mind because we've seen twists and turns through all this stuff.
That would be the, the right way to probably do it because you don't want to, you don't want to start downstream and then drain it and fill it back up down there.
Right, right.
And there is, make no mistake, there is a lot of silt in that lake, and it, it's horrible.
And so after this, we do this, is there a way that we can get in there and start like doing good river conservation where those things, those dams really should be draining the river like every 10 to 12 years, if I understand. The last time Ingram was drained was 2009.
Right, right. Draining that lake's a pretty major project, Judge.
Sure, it is.
It looked like you were fixing to say something on that.
I don't think Flat Rock or Lyons have ever been drained.
Yeah, well, they're not as old as our lake.
Right.
They're the same age.
They're the same age, Charlie?
Those dams are the same age.
There you go.
It didn't cost millions of dollars in 2009.
Nothing cost as much as in 2009 as it does now, but, you know, I don't.
Let me interrupt.
Yes, sir.
This meeting is being conducted like a workshop, not a Commissioners Court meeting. And we have very important business to do. We've got one timed item at 9:45, and I've got a lot of people who are going to get hurt after that. And there's like 16 items that are all very important and have to be addressed.
Yeah.
I appreciate the concern, but this is probably not the best forum to do it.
Starting point.
Well, we've started. And, and I think what we need to do now is figure out how to have, start some sort of workshop and information gathering because there's a whole lot of things that need to be discussed. The applicability of the GBRNA agreement, I don't think, takes place until the permit was obtained, and it's not obtained to date. So we joined something too soon. We're going to have to take a look at that. There are a lot of things we have to talk about. And, and I welcome the discussion. These are all things that we need to pursue, and we need to flesh out and get, get a common understanding. But this is not an action item for today.
I, I don't hear an action item for today.
So with that, I'm going to respectful, no, see, that's, 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 you're doing workshop.
I know, I was going to ask you, well, can we get a workshop?
Yes, you can. And we'll have, we'll have to get together and schedule it.
Okay.
All that can be done. We just have to do it through proper channels, which is sitting in that end chair right over But seriously, we do want to continue the discussion, we just can't do it today. So with that, I have to move on to the next timed item, which was 9:15. And that's Todd Bach, and considered discussing appropriate action regarding the presentation of the current EDC 2526 budget.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
So today, I'd like to preview with you our request for funding for the 2526 budget. Got a quick presentation here. Next, I want to show you here, this is our board members and the representation that our board has from the city to the county to K-Pub, Kerr County, City of Kerrville, ISDs represented in Ingram, Julie Davis, the CEBB, Mindy Wendely, Mindy Curran, Greg Appel, and Beck Gibson. Myself, Todd Bach, as Executive Director, would like to announce that Teresa Metcalf has rejoined the organization as Deputy Director. We had a plan to bring Teresa back in within the next two to two and a half years, and obviously, July 4th changed all that. So we have created a budget this year that would allow for her to be a full-time employee and assist with our long-term recovery. Next. So our fiscal focus this year for 2526, long-term recovery of Kerr County, individual and business assistance, as well as public assistance, as alluded by Ms. Simmons. When the President mentioned that, or declared the disaster on the 6th, there's a lot of federal money that will become available. We'd like to also announce that Kerr EDC and the Long-Term Recovery Group has two experts and specialists consulting us that were responsible for the recovery of Aransas County. They know where this money is available. They will be in our community with us for, for a while to help all the way from the Far East to the Far West to identify project needs and then match that project need with the grants and the funding available from the federal and the state level. They were very successful with this in the rebuild of Aransas County and Rockport and Fulton. And, excuse me, Mr. William Whitston showed up this morning at 8:30, ready to work. Moving on from the long-term recovery, we also, as Kerr EDC, have a responsibility to not only retain and maintain our businesses post-July 4th, but a responsibility to our existing businesses pre-July. We had a lot of businesses which were in recovery, well, in expansion process that we will continue to work, and we will continue to service those businesses that were not affected by the flood, as well as those that were directly and indirectly affected by the flood. Also apart, pre-flood, we had a workforce development partnership that we were working on, bringing all of our locals, what we call the educators, together to help all, match all their programmings that they're, that they are involved in with gaining and controlling our workforce for our youth. Our youth in which we can put in internships within existing employers that would be willing to take those on and maximize that with Workforce Solutions Alamo's funding to help the employer take those employees in and give them an opportunity to see if this is the field they truly like or want to be in, or the employer the opportunity to hire that, that potential student permanently. And we'll also be working on the Mega Creek groundbreaking. We look forward to seeing that in 2026. Don't have exact dates yet. They are still in the process of obtaining their TCEQ permit. Next. Judge and Commissioners, if you will look in the budget, you'll have, this is a new budget for us this year, the first time it's ever been presented this way. We have contracted, the board has decided to contract with the City of Kerrville for our bookkeeping. So moving forward, you will see a more continuity in our budgeting and our estimates and our process through our accounting. As you'll look on the, the far left-hand side, you'll see the budget for 2425, which was $550,000. Then you're going to see the center column there is an estimate that we had to run through and build an estimate based on what we assumed expenses would be from June through the rest of the year. In September, we, our Executive Director, Gil Salinas, left the organization to take a job back in, down back home in Brownsville. And in January, we lost our Deputy Director, which was the interim Executive Director, and had a job opportunity that was given to her. The board then allowed me to step in as a board member and take over operations and just maintain operations until July, June. And then the position was offered to me full-time, which I accepted, and July 1st was my first day. And so we had to make some modifications and change our budget. I do want to point out too, that this budget does include having Teresa. As you'll see, the county contribution was reduced by 27.3% along with the K-Pub contribution for the year of 2026. And EIC has approved this budget with their 9.1% increase to 375,000, bringing a total proposed request of 475, which is $75,000 less than the 2025, 2425 budget. As you go through the salaries and wages, you'll see that we had cut expenditures there. We go through on the supply side, on the general operations, our software maintenance is our phone, legal services, audit, banking, and insurance, which we took then and had a 21% reduction in operating costs. And next item would be the business retention and expansion, our BREE program. Well, the BREE program is going to be somewhat of a mixture of what we just spoke about on the long-term recovery, plus plans that we had for the previous existing opportunity for the existing businesses pre-flood. You'll see there in our first personnel, we've got the, the biggest increase you'll see that was not budgeted because of the way we budgeted previously, was the $12,664, which will be used for our personnel and meeting spaces to host those meetings with our educators and workforce.
We're not on the right slide, I don't think, are we?
Oh, I'm sorry.
There we go.
Maybe one more. There we go. Sorry about that. There is the business retention and expansion. Please keep in mind, Court, that these were pre-flood, as we know, things changed drastically. We did make a few modifications. Number one, we felt like getting Teresa onboard was the most important, to have a second, second set of hands to help us. She has been part of the organization since 2016 to 2021 full-time, and she ran the business retention and expansion program for Kerr EDC. Moving through the budget, you'll see marketing. Marketing is a title for what we would use as business attraction. In the past, Kerr EDC would go market out to other industries that we were looking to attract within Kerr County. As you can see, the, that is a minimal at this time in a budget because we have budgeted to be a part of the Greater SATX instead of a lot of independent marketing. So we are now a part of the Greater SATX partnership, which puts us in a, in the San Antonio market and the, I believe, eight surrounding counties. Any business looking to expand within that region that contacts the Greater SATX, we now get a look at their business model, their needs, what industry they are, how many employees they, they are going to look, properties, locations, warehousing. So we have reduced our budgeting in just the overall marketing for that. So we have reduced our budgeting in just the overall marketing for that, and have increased that and put that into our budget for being a Greater S A T X partnership. Okay, there at the bottom of this slide, you will see that we have an updated fund balance, which is going to be the center column of 175, 712. Our intentions are not to use that money for operating expenses. The board will have discretion over that use. We have talked about, and have not limited to anything. At this point, we are looking at potential micro lending to businesses for their business retention and expansion. We are looking at facade grants it could possibly use for. Just so you know, our board has full control over those dollars, and those dollars will not be spent without board approval. And I will turn it over to the court for any questions.
Just a comment. Greg brief. I mean, complete confidence with you being there, and I thank you for the work that you're doing, Todd. It's definitely appreciated.
Thank you. And likewise to everyone in this room and everyone up there on the court. It has been amazing. As Judge, you know, and you're on the board, and Tom, you're first day on the second meeting on the board. It is... We are moving fast, and I will comment briefly on that long-term recovery group. We are working on every aspect we have within that long-term recovery group. We've identified 14 individual sectors that we have volunteers from east to west that are a part of, to handle unmet needs, to warehousing, to mental health and wellness, to construction, to home building, you name it. We have many volunteers that are... have been and involved within their communities doing this. Just so everyone knows, this is a community-led and a community-organized organization. It is from grassroots up. We've been working with the Community Foundation, and we are also looking at other major funding sources through the federal and state levels to help out in this recovery process. There are many different opportunities that we have the channels to access. We'll just be spending the next near future identifying those throughout the communities and then get after the grant money.
Todd, I appreciate your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, that's not the format. That's what I'm trying to say. Do we have a motion?
I motion we accept the report.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second to accept the K E D C budget as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you, Todd.
Thank you, Judge.
And for those of you that don't know, the members of the K E D C board are part of the core Long-Term Recovery Group, helping lead that, along with, what, 30 other people? Well, but it's all good.
Yep. Right now, Judge, I think we have probably pretty close to 45 to 50 within that organization.
And they hit the ground running.
Yes, sir.
With that, let's take a five-minute break, come back at 10:15, and we'll start with the 9:45 items. Those of you that are not 9:45 items, if you want to take some time before you come back, feel free to do so. These are technical things that we have to go through. Court, we'll come back to order.
We've got a lot of 9:45 items.
16.
Where's the whole technical stuff?
Court, we'll come to order. Can somebody close the back door back there? Thank you, Tara.
Well, he'll be in the hallway talking.
There he is.
Yep. I was right. Get caught out there, you can't get out.
Okay. Court, we'll come back to order. We have 16 9:45 timed items that we need to take before we can get back on the agenda, the regular agenda. So we're going to start with item 1.9. That is Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Reset the Public Hearing on the Proposed Kerr County Budget for Fiscal Year 2526 for 9:00 a.m. on September 2nd, 2025. The public hearing was originally set for August 25 at 9:45 a.m., but did not get published in the newspaper as requested, so the date must be reset. Notice of the new date for public hearing to be published on August 23, 2025, in the Kerrville Daily Times. The Kerr County budget for fiscal year 2526 will be adopted at 9:45 on September 8, 2025. Ms. Shelton.
Yes, that is our request.
That pretty much tells the whole story.
That fits all of the dates that we have to comply with.
And so that the public understands, we had a little snafu. We were trying to get it published, and there was a miscommunication, and we didn't get it in the paper in time. So this is how we salvaged it. So we've got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, my only question is, is this still the budget that was presented on the 13th, the date August 13th?
No, because y'all have made changes since then. Y'all have done all kinds of adding staff since then. So it will be on the news.
This is the latest updated version.
Well, I'm updating it pretty much as I'm getting information as I can.
And I'll provide you some new information.
Yes.
Okay. Well, as soon as you can share that with us, we'd like to see it.
Any other discussion?
No.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.10, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Reset the Date and Time for the Vote on the Kerr County Budget for Fiscal Year 2526 for 9:45 a.m. on September 8, 2025. The vote was originally set for August 25, 2025, but did not get published in the newspaper as requested, so that the date must be reset. I move for approval. Got a motion and a second to approve resetting the vote on the budget as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. 5-0. Item 1.11, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Adopt the Elected Official Salary for F Y 2526. Ms. Zapata.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. Same salaries that were approved or that we presented previous court.
At our last meeting, did we discuss this?
Correct. Yes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the elected official salaries for F Y 2526 as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous, 5-0. Item 1.12, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve the Grade and Step Schedule for F Y 2526. Ms. Zapata.
So this is a grade and step that's increasing by the 2%. I sent y'all a copy on Friday for y'all to review.
I move for approval as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the grade and step schedule for F Y 2526 as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 113, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Adopt the Position Schedule for F Y 2526. Ms. Zapata.
Again, this is... I sent y'all a copy on Friday. This is increasing the 2% for everybody's salaries.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the position schedule as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.14, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Approve the General Provisions for F Y 2526. Ms. Zapata.
And so this one, the general provisions, the only thing that changed from last year was we added the wording where a new employee, new to Kerr County employee... I'm sorry, a new employee, new to Kerr County would be able to increase the two steps. That's it. It's just a little wording that we added in there. Make that clarification from last year. Other than that, they stayed the same from previous years.
I'll make a motion that we approve the general provisions for fiscal year 2526 as presented.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the general provisions as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Next item, 1.15, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Accept the Order Setting the Salaries for the County Auditor and Assistant County Auditors pursuant to the Texas Local Government Code, Section 152.031, and the effective date to be October 1, 2025. Ms. Shelton.
Yes, you have before you the order. This is after the hearing that was held on August 1st.
Right. I'll make a motion that we approve the salaries for the county auditor and assistant county auditors as presented.
Sure.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, what's the percent increase? That didn't show the last year's salaries, so I was unable to calculate it.
I believe it's 7%.
I want to point out something, that this is... The wording is "accept," not "approve." You know, it kind of comes down to it.
You're right. We...
Just close downhill.
This is beyond our authority. I understand. This is... Our district judges have said...
Oh, I know. That's why I'm pointing.
We don't get a say, but I want to do at least understand.
Yep.
They're obviously a lot more generous with the taxpayers' dollars than this court was with our staff.
Yes. We went 2%, they went 7%.
Thanks for pointing that out.
But I might point out that the assistant auditor position that is open has been... We tried to run that salary pass one before, and they didn't take it, so we're not even sure we're going to be able to fill that position. Just for what it's worth.
Yep. Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Next item is 1.16, Consider Discuss and Take Appropriate Action to Reset the Order Setting Salaries for the 198th District Court Reporter and the 216th District Court Reporter. Again, we don't have a choice on those.
Yes, this is the same hearing on August 1, and this was outcome this order was set at that time. For these orders.
What's the increase?
I would have to go back and look at this. I don't know that off the top of my head. I probably knew it on August 1. But we... They do participate in the... all of the... But we, they do participate in the, all of the wage adjustments that y'all do, all of the county benefits, that everyone gets those also.
Yeah, but they, they get to set the increase.
The district judges do.
Yeah. So it may well be different, and I'd like to know what that is.
If you could follow up with us on that?
Certainly.
Set if you could follow up?
Sure. I mean, it wasn't my motion, so.
Where is the accountability in that when we're accepting an order?
The accountability is, they're holding us accountable.
Yeah.
They review us.
I know.
She's hired by them to oversee what we're doing.
Right, right. But I'm just saying, when we're talking about salaries, that I'm not sure why we're accountable to vote on accepting an order from them on a salary increase. It just seems like it's kind of.
Because it goes in our budget.
And local government code does require the order to be presented to Commissioner's Court and Commissioner's Court to pay those salaries.
Okay, so if we decided we didn't want to accept it, what would be our recourse?
Lawsuit.
I guess that's my question.
Lawsuit, maybe, probably. Attorney General.
And I'm not, I'm not suggesting we don't, I'm just.
I think there's child language in there that requires you to do it.
I know, right, yeah, that's the reason, this seems like a redundant exercise to me.
We have to include this in our budget, even though they're not our employees.
Right, right.
Well, it would be nice if the district judges would perhaps come to court at about the same time that we're discussing employees' salaries and have that discussion. They can still, they're free to do what they want to do, but I kind of feel like there's a huge disconnect.
I don't think statutorily they're required to do it.
I agree, they're not.
No, they're not.
I said it would be nice.
I know both, both of them personally, they'd be happy to come talk to us if we needed them to do that.
Sure.
With all.
We haven't requested that.
With all due respect, that is why there is a public hearing when they set these wages, so anybody that wants to participate can come by and participate. It is published in the newspaper.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Thank you, Karen.
Mm-hmm.
So we have a motion and a second to approve them, the court for the court reporters?
No, no.
No second, no motion?
No, no motion, no second.
I'll make a motion.
Got a motion. And a second. To approve the one ninety-eighth to two-sixteenth District Court reporters' salaries as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. One point seventeen, consider discuss and take appropriate action to rescind court order number four-one-three-seven-eight, as the court does not desire to use section twenty-six point oh-four-two of the Texas Property Tax Code. Mr. Reeves.
Good morning, gentlemen. Based on the various workshops, it is my understanding that it appears the court does not want to utilize section twenty-six point four-oh-two of the Texas Property Tax Code. This section of the code deals with using the voter approval rate of one point oh-eight percent due to the events of July four. If this is the case, then based on advice from our ad valorem tax attorneys, the court should rescind court order four-one-three-seven-eight, which authorized me to calculate the voter approval rate in that manner.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Unanimous. One point eighteen, consider discuss and take appropriate action to take a record vote on the proposed twenty twenty-five Kirk County tax rate. It will be a combined tax rate for Kirk County and lateral roads. Mr. Reeves.
Yes, sir. The next three agenda items will deal with the proposing and setting, with proposing and setting the times and dates for a public hearing and subsequent adoption. Item one point one-eight, this item pertains to the court proposing a combined rate for Kirk County and lateral roads. Based on the budget submitted, it's my understanding that the combined tax rate for twenty twenty-five is point four-two-three-three, forty-two point three-three cents per one hundred dollars valuation. That breakdown is maintenance and operations, thirty-five point three-one cents, interest in sinking fund, four point nine-two cents, and the lateral road fund, two point one cents per one hundred dollars. This rate does exceed the no new revenue rate of forty point two-four cents. Now, should the court desire a different one, the INS and the lateral roads would be the same, the only difference would be the maintenance and operations.
Well, I would like to see a no new tax rate of point three-eight-three-one, actually.
Excuse me, Commissioner, that is not the statutory no new revenue rate.
No, I didn't say no new revenue, I said it's effectively a no new tax rate. Anyway, I would like to see a rate of point three-eight-three-one.
And I would like to see a no new revenue rate of point four-oh-two-four.
I agree with that.
Do we, do we need to make a motion to propose a different rate? Or what do we got to do here? Because I'm happy to make a motion to.
Whatever rate y'all vote on must be a record vote by, roll call by the judge.
Right, okay.
I understand that.
Yep. Again, just, just to be clear, I'm going to make a motion that we adopt a tax rate of point three-eight-three-one.
There's a motion, is there a second? No second? Motion fails for lacking a second. Is there another motion?
Can I make a motion of point four-oh-two-four to be adopted?
Got a motion and a second to adapt, adopt the point four-zero-two-four tax rate, which is the no new revenue rate, as I understand it.
Yes, sir.
And if I'm clear, Judge, that would be a maintenance operations rate of thirty-three point eight-two cents. And Ms. Shelton, please correct me if my numbers are off, the debt rate of four point nine-two cents, lateral roads of two point one cent. Does that concur?
So I'll just point out that even though we're calling it a no new revenue tax rate, it will increase taxes on those who don't have their taxes frozen. Well, I think your estimate was seventy-four dollars based on the average appraised value of three hundred and sixty thousand, is that correct, Bob?
The average home value.
Yeah.
That doesn't mean everybody's taxes will go up because average is their sum.
Absolutely. Because of the appraised value differential, I mean, they're not all the same, so, I agree.
Discussion?
Yeah, we, we've, we've looked at this budget real hard and I was told, and Ms. Shelton has some information to share with her too, and I think we've got our FEMA number down from where we started at around ten million to less than two. By everything I've been able to come up with, some real numbers, probably closer to one point three is where we're at. And so I think with that being said, that the no new tax revenue rate, I think, is in order without putting us in a dire strait here.
I agree.
That's an expense.
It is, it is.
I'm concerned about revenues.
Right.
So, so just to quantify this, that's going to decrease our twenty-five percent, because we're, you know, our best practice is to have twenty-five percent of our fund balance for expenditures and, or expenditures in fund balance. So that is going to take us down closer to twenty-two percent, which means next year we will need a plan to go up about one point nine million. That's how far with adopting or looking at the four-oh-two-four, that's how much under we'll end up being at the end of the year.
I think that's understood, and of course, I will point out that we have typically had a much higher reserve balance at the end of a fiscal year from what we estimated it would be at the start of a fiscal year. For example, the approved budget in twenty-three, twenty-four, we had a projection of an ending reserve balance of sixteen point three million, and we started the fiscal twenty-four, twenty-five with a reserve balance of thirty-two point two million. And then that estimated for this current fiscal year, we estimated that we would have a seventeen point eight million dollar reserve balance at basically the end of next month. And currently, I mean, it may have changed slightly, but we're projecting a twenty-six point nine million starting balance, so.
So Commissioner Pace, I will kind of update you in looking at the financials at the end of July. Last year, at the end of July, we had seven million dollars left to take us through the end of the year. This year, we're at one million. So the, the negative budgets that we, the spending of the fund balance that we have been projecting through the years that generally don't happen are most likely going to happen this year between the expenses of the flood and just because we, everyone is spending their money this year.
That will be the case, I guess I'll wait and see the, the latest budget when you put that out, because that will have the expected reserve balance one.
Mr. Reeves? Yes, sir. It's on you, gentlemen, now. I've given you the numbers. I would like to make one comment. My calculations have been on the front page of the website, there's a link since early August, one of the early comments in the court.
Before we vote, maybe can we hear from you while your recommendations at point four-two-three-three?
I make no recommendations, Commissioner. I make calculations.
I made that recommendation.
That was based off the judge's budget?
And I was just trying to keep the tax rate the same as it was last year. That's what I was trying to do. Because we're losing revenues. We're losing quite a bit of value for the damaged properties, and I don't see anything replacing that lost revenue. We are spending approximately forty percent of our fund balance to pay for things in this coming year's budget. We're not going to have the ability to replace that eleven and a half million dollars come next year. And when we talk about no new revenue rates, it's all based upon the state's limitation that counties can only increase their tax rate, a maximum of three and a half percent per year, if I understand that correctly, Ms. Reeves.
Yes, sir.
And we have, in, 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 Mr. Harris', in my tenure, we have never raised the tax rate like that, not one single time. And what that's done is put us farther behind in terms of what our tax rate really is. And we elected not to take advantage of the emergency tax rate provision in the, in the tax code. And I'm worried about keeping the tax rate the same rate that I proposed. I genuinely am scared to death with that tax rate, and to reduce it any more than that is almost heroin for our time, for me. And I think that, I think too obsessed with the tax rate loses sight over what the tax rate is really intended to do, and that is to fund local government, for local government to be able to do the things that the Constitution and the subsequent statutes require us to do. And I'm, I'm afraid that we're not going to be able to perform those functions if we let this tax rate continue to go down like it has. I just don't think it's sustainable long term. And I say that merely as a caveat to the public, that don't be surprised if we can't pay the bills.
Well, Judge, I agree with a lot of what you said, but also, this is a tough time for folks. And July twenty-fourth, I mean, July fourth changed a lot of things, and I think the no new revenue rate is definitely the route to go. Understand, next year, that we probably won't be able to do that again.
Let me just put a question to, to the auditor. You need to go to the podium so that people can hear you, this is important. Remind all of us again, what are estimated damages so far from this flood?
I would have to defer to Commissioner Jones, and he continues to, to cut down on the amount of damages that we're having as a county itself. So we, we, most of ours are covered by our property insurance. What's remaining are roads and bridges at about six hundred thousand, I believe, the latest I saw on the lift stations that just came in this morning, I think it was a hundred thousand. Charlie, thank you, Charlie sent that.
Eight hundred and two. You've got, you've got the temporary mobile bridge, which most likely we will not have to pay that five hundred thousand.
Most likely.
Well, I know, so we have to put it in there.
Yeah.
But, but, so you've got that temporary bridge at five hundred thousand that we've already been told is most likely going to be paid for, but they're waiting for us to get everything set up, and we'll have more discussion on Kade Loop here shortly, but you're looking at about five hundred thousand dollars for Kade Loop. You've got guard rails, roads and bridges, you're looking at about six hundred thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars for that total now?
No, 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 it is six hundred thousand total.
It is a six hundred?
The hundred was in addition to.
Okay, that's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah. And I'm trying to just look over a screenshot right now, by the way. And so that's cut that way down, the sewer system, cut down to right at a hundred thousand dollars, the, the Flat Rock and Lyons Camp and, and Parks, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, gets you to one point three-three-two-eight-seventeen. That's, and then add that other five hundred thousand for that temporary bridge that we're looking at until we know for sure it's funded. Gets you at the one point eight.
And he said Lyons Camp, but he meant Lyons Park.
Yeah, right.
Don't get him.
Oh, yeah, I forget there's a camp, yeah.
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 But those, those, those damages were not in our budget.
No.
But we also have two different groups that are stepping forward to try to help fund restoration of both of those two parks.
Those damages were, they were figured in to the overall budget portion, because you, you were showing originally ten million dollars, right?
Yes.
And so, because that's money that would have to go out.
Yes.
Cover all this until we got our reimbursement, right?
Yes. FEMA is a reimbursement grant. I'm sorry?
Thirteen percent of that number originally is where we're at.
So again, and with that, we had taken down road and bridge, also, if you'll look at that proposed schedule, to eight percent fund balance, so that's one month. And so after that, general fund would be having to put money back in, so probably whatever doesn't end up going toward FEMA will go toward road and bridge.
Right, right. And so for me, the biggest concern that we should have is what, what's our overall loss of property damage? And we're at two hundred and thirty-eight million with that?
And we are using, two hundred and forty thousand was the pro-rata for the current year.
Two hundred and forty million.
Two hundred and forty million, sorry, two hundred and forty million, and so if you annualize that, that's four hundred and eighty, and looking at that, that's about two million dollars is what will come off the top next year. And in this next year's, let me re-say, let me re-say that. Whenever the taxes are set or for, not here we're talking about, but the year after, that's when the two million will come off the top of that, because we're estimating that the values will be lower because of the loss. What that means to the county is there'll be about two million dollars lower coming in and being able to use.
Possibly, right.
Possibly.
Right.
And we've also projected that into this next year's budget as far as saying we're not going to collect the two million dollars, the people that had the loss. There's a one million dollar that they can get the disaster exclusion for, I believe is the name of the form, that they would be turning into the Central Appraisal District.
Right. And what's the deadline to turn that in?
I believe the deadline is October eighteen. I think that is a Saturday, so it would extend to the next business day on that. The total impact to our levy. The total impact to our levy won't really be known until after I send my bills out. We are making a proactive attempt to get everybody to get the values in before, or get their exemption forms in, but they've got a lot of other things on their mind other than getting a form in. A lot of them probably won't come in till after I get the bills out in October. I also anticipate, as Ms. Shelton said, the collection rate, I'm already seeing some impact to it year to year, last tax year to this one, pretty much attributed to the last seven weeks.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Yeah, the long-term recovery is going to be extremely important in all of this too, right? Because we've got homes being rebuilt today. We're, we're, we are literally months and months ahead of where most counties are at this time.
Yes, sir. The ones that could be rebuilt, it all depends on what, where they're at on January 1st. That's the valuation date for property taxes. So 30-plus, 40-plus years of real estate appraisal, I don't use a crystal ball because it's all fuzzy.
Right.
So I really can't anticipate, other than my years of experience, we're going to see a decline in taxable value this year. Every year, we get to depend on new value. In other words, a new house built. This year, the events of July 4th, if all exemptions are turned in, will probably erode 100-plus percent of what we normally gain.
Right. And I'm glad you, you mentioned about the new homes because we, we've been watching new home builds, right? And we understand our growth rate has gone a little bit more than .8 to about 1%. So there's value in the future with new home builds, but a lot of that's been in the city area.
The city's in Kirk County, Commissioner.
Yes. So with that, for public understanding, shared proportion of taxable value on that?
There's no shared.
Just all?
If it's a dollar for us, they have some abatement, so it's not necessarily a dollar. You build a $100,000 house in C- Curville, Kirk County will see $100,000 of new value, not taxes, new value from that. The city has various programs, so I can't really speak on that.
The county hasn't had much in the way of tax abatements. There was one.
Right.
Otherwise, we have not been overly generous with tax abatements.
That's, that's correct, Commissioner.
Well, we are experiencing growth. There's some new homes and.
We have been.
Some value.
We have been. That is correct.
And the rebuild of a lot of homes brings maybe the values eventually back up, but right now for, seems like they're going to be struggling for a little bit.
Yep. Ready for the vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, this is a record vote. And the motion is to adopt the no new revenue rate, .4024, as the cumulative tax rate for Kirk County for the coming year. Is that right?
It's to propose the rate. You will subsequently adopt it at a future meeting.
Okay, so this is a, to propose.
And I will point out, at the time of adoption, you may come down, you may not go up.
So we're capped?
Understood.
That's, that's the top that you can go with, Judge.
Do we need to modify the motion then, or?
No, that's the law.
No.
Okay. So with that, Precinct 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
Precinct 2, how do you vote?
Yes, for .4024.
Precinct 3?
Yes, for .40.
Precinct 24.
And Precinct 4?
Yes.
And I'm going to vote against it. So it's a 4-1 vote. We'll move on to item 1.19, which is to consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2025 tax rate for Kirk County and lateral roads.
Yes, sir. Ms. Shelton, the projected date is the 8th?
It's.
No, I'm sorry.
First is next Monday, so two weeks from today.
So it would be if the court desires, September 8th. I do need, if that is the date, I definitely need to know now because I've got to get the notice to the paper.
Right.
I move for approval, September 8th.
At what time, Commissioner?
It's just the budget is not called, so 10:00 or 9:00. It's 9:50.
9:50?
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second? Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.20, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set the date and time for the adoption of the 2025 tax rate for Kirk County and lateral roads, Kirk County and lateral roads.
This will have to be at some point in time after the hearing. It can be at the same meeting if the court so desires.
I'll make the motion to make it September 8th at 9:55.
And that's to adopt, to adopt the tax rate, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to set the time for the adoption of the 25 tax rate for Kirk County and lateral roads for September 8th at 9:55. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hands. Unanimous. Item 1.21, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to take a record vote on the proposed 2025 Lake Ingram Estates Road Tax Rate.
Yes, sir. The 2025 tax rate to service the debt for the Lake Ingram Estates Road District equates to 9.81 cents per $100 valuation. The entire tax rate will be dedicated to the interest and sinking fund. A record vote of the court should be taken for the proposed tax rate of outlined.
I'll move for approval.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve, tell us the rate again.
The interest and sinking fund rate for the Lake Ingram Estates Road District is 9.81 cents per $100 valuation. I would point out, this only affects the property owners of the Lake Ingram Estates Road District. This is not a countywide tax rate.
So we have a motion, take a record vote, and the proposed INS rate for the Lake Ingram Estates Road District tax rate to be 9.81 cents per $100 valuation.
That is correct, Judge.
Just a question for Commissioner Harris. Is it, is this Lake Ingram Estates, were they damaged by the flood or not really? I'm not familiar with it.
Kirk County is damaged by the flood.
Yeah, but physical damage.
Some.
Some. Any other discussion? Those in favor, that's a record vote.
Record vote.
Record vote. So Precinct 1, how do you vote?
Yes.
Precinct 2?
Yes.
Precinct 3?
Yes.
Precinct 4?
Yes.
And as a county judge, I vote yes, 5-0, unanimous. Next item is 1.22, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set the date and time to hold a public hearing for the 2025 tax rate for Lake Ingram Estates Road District.
Yes, sir. Just as you read the agenda item, we will need a time to hold a public hearing for this tax rate. I believe it would be the same day, September 8th, and at the time that y'all choose.
I'll make a motion for September 8th at 10 o'clock.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the public hearing for the Lake Ingram Estate Road District tax for September 8th, 2025, at 10 o'clock in the morning. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. 1.23, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to set the date and time for the adoption of the 2025 tax rate for Lake Ingram Estates Road District.
Yes, sir. It's the court's prerogative what date and time, but typically you would do it right after the public hearing. And if y'all would provide me with the date, assuming September 8th and an appropriate time.
Let's do it September 8th at 10:05.
You don't have to have five minutes in between. You could just put it at 10 o'clock and it just happened right after.
It's up to you. I need to be able to.
Normally, just to defend, why don't we do that? That creates a record of what we did first and what we did second. I mean, we put it all at 10 o'clock. That's true.
I'm just saying, yeah.
But when we build it into the agenda, then it's very questionable that we did it that way.
You're right.
Otherwise, you're guaranteeing that you had a five-minute break as opposed to.
We had, we had that happen. We've had one that we did set, what, 10 or 15 minutes, and we had to pause.
Anyway. It's your motion, whatever you want to do.
All right, it's at 10:05.
Okay.
Okay. Any discussion?
We need a second.
Second.
Okay.
I will second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second.
He beat you.
And this is for September 8th at 10:05.
Yes, sir.
Okay, those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. And the last timed item in this sequence, 9:45, is item 1.24, consider, discuss, and take appropriate action regarding the optional $1.50 child safety fee and optional $10 county road and bridge fee for 2026 vehicle registration per request from the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles and authorized tax assessor collector to submit the approval to the Texas Department of Motor Vehicles. Mr. Reeves?
Yes, sir. Section 502.403 of the Transportation Code allows a county to charge a fee not to exceed $1.50 when registering a vehicle. This fee is dedicated to child safety. The fee must be approved prior to September 1 of each year, and it becomes effective on January 1 of the following year. Kirk County began collecting this fee January 1, 2021. In the 2024 calendar year, Kirk County collected $87,316 from this fee. During the current calendar year, through the end of July, we had collected $57,286. This fee is divided prorata according to population with the two municipalities of Kirk County as well as Kirk County. So we received roughly half, and I believe there is a service fee that we may retain out of that.
Well, I ask this every year, where does that money go?
You'll have to ask.
Where, where, where does this money go?
Based on road and bridge.
I guess the one we always wonder about is the child safety fee, like the $1.50. Like, is that, is somebody getting a car seat or? That it's needy?
Crosswalks, school signs, and we do it at school districts outside of the municipalities. You think Nimitz, you think Center Point, if you think Hunt.
Sure.
I don't think there's a crosswalk across 41 that divides the whole, Commissioner.
But it's a dedicated fund.
It's a dedicated fund. That is correct.
That's all I wanted.
I've provided information in your backup. I won't read it all, how this child safety fee is placed in the handbook by statute. In addition, section 502.401 of the Transportation Code allows a county to charge a fee not to exceed $10 when registering a vehicle. This $10 fee is dedicated to the county road and bridge fund. According to the Texas DMV, during the 2024 calendar year, Kirk County collected $582,110 from this fee. And during the first seven months of the current calendar year, we have collected $391,910. This fee also must be approved by September 1 of each year, and it becomes effective January 1 of the following year. Kirk County has been collecting this fee for, long before I was in this office, and I know all of this money, every Tuesday, is transferred to a specific fund for road and bridge operations. I respectfully request that the court approve the $10 optional fee for the road and bridge fund of the county and the optional $1.50 for the child safety fee. The fees would become effective 1-1 of 2026, and after approval, I will forward the information to the Texas Department of Motor Vehicle.
I'll move for approval. Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve the $1.50 child safety fee and the $10 county road and bridge fee as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, with that, we're going to go back to our regular agenda, and I believe we're on item 1.2. And I apologize that you've had to wait this long.
You have time items.
No, no.
Oh, you're right.
And this is 1.2, is consider, discuss, and take appropriate action to determine the status of the Guadalupe River. Is the Guadalupe River closed to recreational activities such as fishing, kayaking, swimming, or gathering on the riverbanks either on private or public lands? And this is Melanie Shubert.
Shubert, yes. Hi, my name is Melanie Shubert. I am the owner of Tree Top River Cabins, which is a commercial property located in Center Point, Texas, 114 CP River Road. I'm directly across from Lyons Park Dam and the closest commercial property upriver from the dam. And the reason why I'm coming to the court is I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. I've done whatever I can to buy a property that was FEMA-approved when it was being built. It was out of the floodplain, so the interior of our property was not damaged, anything below our property's floor plan and livable area. We did have a lot of loss, but I kind of planned ahead for most of that. I've been in several floods before, so it wasn't my first rodeo, going with the flow. And I have to say thank you to everybody who was a first responder, who is sitting in this court today, to the sheriff, to Upper Guadalupe River Authority. Out of all the floods I've been to, Wimberley floods, the Blanco floods, Hurricane Katrina, I don't know why, but my family lives on water, so we've been there, done that. This was the most organized one that I've ever experienced. And I've mucked out a whole lot of houses because of floods, but I was really impressed. The one thing that stabbed me in the heart a little bit is when I did try to recover our property as fast as possible, I knew I couldn't, I knew I couldn't host some of our guests, so we had a lot of loss of business. I had a lot of reservations that canceled because of the fear of the river not coming back to life and it not being a wonderful place for people to gather. I had reservations through 2026 summer that have canceled. I think we collect our first night's deposit, so we gave away like, you know, $16,000 worth of deposits just for people that had planned on coming. So yes, I know it's going to take a year, maybe two to recover, but part of my plan, kind of like you said, there's a lot of catastrophes out there, I think now we're in the mental health part of it and the money part of it. And part of the mental health part of it, I know for me, recovering, is coming back to the river, opening it back up, making it a peaceful place for people. They might not want to dip their toes in the river, but there was nothing more healing this weekend than being out on the dock in the middle of the Guadalupe, drinking coffee and just waving at everybody coming by the bridge. It was healing. And the river, as far as Upper Guadalupe River, I've been in contact with them almost every week since the flood. I've been testing the water ourselves. I know they've been testing it. I think, I can't talk about all of the river, but I know at Lake Center Point that our water is cleaner and clearer now and has less toxins in it than it did before the flood. They've tested for everything, car batteries, paint. They've tested for everything, car batteries, paint, whatever they could think of, things that they had never tested before, and they're not finding anything of it. So I'm really hoping that everyone here, including the commissioners, will join me in trying to now restore it money-wise and just educate everybody about the river. I kind of feel like, um, as a landowner and a business owner, one reason why I bought this business is I felt like it could survive the biggest flood I could imagine, which, yay, we did survive, you know? But now it's time not to be scared of the river, but to educate people how to be good stewards of the river, how to rebuild good, how FEMA has told us to rebuild. Slow down and let Mother Nature take some of the healing process so that we can heal along the river. Some of the, uh, the Sheriff's Department, um, brought this to y'all's court's attention a couple of days ago. He walked up and said, "Some lady with some Airbnb sent me an invoice. I don't know what to do about this situation. Somebody came to her river, came in her private property, and my deputy told them that he would advise against being in the river." Well, that family packed up and left, and I had to refund them three thousand eight hundred dollars for their family reunion. It's really hard to take money out of my pocket right now when I've done everything I can to bring it back. Me and the sheriff, I think, are on the same page now. Me and the GRA are on the same page now. Mr. Pace has really helped us out in saying, "Let's restore the park. Let's do what we can for the riverbanks." So I feel like a lot of people are ready to get back on the river, at least start gathering on the riverbank, so I just wanted to make sure all of us were in accordance with that before I go back on the news anymore or I start doing a bunch of advertising and pushing our businesses too open. I just wanted to make sure I had y'all's blessing in trying to do that, basically. So that's what I'm asking is for the blessing to start advertising and start saying that our river is open. I, I think that I've done the due diligence of making sure that the property or in the waters in front of me are clean and clear. I've had more than sixty first responders staying there for free the first two or three weeks because I wanted everybody with the big trucks and the sonar and the night tactical ops and all the dogs to stay at my place for free because I wanted the benefit of them getting in that water, you know, making sure it was good. Anyway, so that's what I'm here to do, is my first goal is to get back to business, and the second goal is to help educate families and friends and people who don't live on the river, um, how to be stewards of the river, how to, um, gauge when the river might be coming up, um, how to read the gauges that are, um, that are out there for the Upper Guadalupe River Authority. Because since I've been to so many floods, it didn't take me by surprise that we were flooding at all. I told my husband to be there at four thirty in the morning, and we were knocking on doors and letting people know because I knew how to read all the gauges. I knew thirty-one feet were coming. I knew that our people had to evacuate to Dollar General. I was there Thursday afternoon, meeting and greeting our guests and telling them, "Sleep with your telephone beside you tonight and have your car keys right beside it at six AM." They all got the warnings from me by us knocking on the door, saying, "Put your keys in your hand. If you don't want to swim out of here, you're going, you need to drive," and, you know, we had our evacuation plan. Anyway, those are the things that I want to teach our guests as, as hosting them, and I want people to still come from San Antonio and Houston and different places. Anyway, that's what, yes, sir?
Just a point of clarification. I appreciate what you're doing and being very alert. I love to hear that you actually track river gauges, which are still available to do and are a great tool to do on your phone. But the comment, we survived. Dylan Smith lost her family ten trees up from you where you're at. So I would ask that you retract that part of your statement because you don't want that going out.
I agree. Yes, sir.
Right? There's a hundred and ten families that didn't. We always want to be mindful and respectful of that. While your business is still, uh, in a good place and you did the right decisions, which I applaud, right? But just please retract that statement.
I retract that statement.
Thank you.
And, and I would like to comment that, that that's a very hard for you to, for you to want us to, to say that it's open for business and ready to move forward. That's a complicated thing for us to answer because we have no clue yet what, what the, uh, debris removal or recovery, uh, down on that part of the river may be yet to come.
As, as.
You're, you're looking at it and saying, "It looks nice and clean and the water tests good and everything." And I'm saying, "We've got people with the state right now that have got sonar equipment running through there, and we still need to do debris removal throughout that river." And so it's probably going to have to be your call whether you think somebody would be safe in that river, but we may have a barge in that river at some point with a clamshell.
I, I agree.
That comes in overnight, you know? All of a sudden, you got people wanting to kayak and stuff, and then all of a sudden there's, uh.
I don't see how we can responsibly tell you, "Yeah, go get on the river."
Well, as, as Mr. Holt said earlier, Commissioner Holt said earlier, if we could, um, if there is some way that there is a database or something we could look at of where those dangers are or when things might be clearing, and I know it changes every single day, but I do have an app when you check into our place that, um, says current river conditions, if that could be.
We're not going to be able to give you daily updates with the states locating on the river.
Okay.
If that's what you're asking for. And, and, and we, we will not be able to do that because they've got equipment up and down there, they get new information daily, and it changes. Uh, and so, um, we can't take on that kind of liability to say, "Go get on the river." It's your property, private property.
You have the right to conduct business.
I would not tell you, you can't.
Right.
Let, let me ask the county attorney to, to address this on the legal status of where we are with this.
Where we are with the debris removal?
With the disaster declaration.
Being able to tell them, they can just go.
It's really about recreational activities. I think it's just an advisement.
Well, I want them to always do it with caution, you know? And we do have, um, a liability waiver that they sign, but they also, I post, um, the, Upper Guadalupe River Authority, um, I look to them a lot and the Texas Parks and Wildlife. I look to them a lot and want to educate my people to look at them so that they're educated on the conditions of the river. But is, is, should I not tell people the river is closed? I guess that's my question.
I can give advice about what you should and shouldn't do with your private business. I can give commissioners advice.
Right.
If you would, let's. Let's go to the, because they need to hear exactly where we are. We got three disaster orders in place, the counties, states, and the nations. So what is the scope of these disaster declarations with regard to private property owners being able to use their riverfrontage?
Well, I think that the concern that Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Harris both just addressed is that, that things change every day. And, um, as far as debris removal goes and what private property owners and businesses decide to do with their property, um, they can't really reasonably be updated every day on the status of the debris removal from the river. And they may invite someone or rent their place out to someone, and, and there's a big piece of equipment in that, right in front of their property the next day. So that's hard for y'all to do as a court, and I don't, I don't think you can, but.
Well, that, that's my question because we've got, we've got a presidential disaster declaration, we've got a governor's disaster declaration, and we've got the county judge's disaster declaration. And is use in, use of the river by private property owners within the scope of those declarations?
I don't, I can't say that I've read anywhere in any of those declarations, no. I haven't looked at them in some time, a few weeks, um, as it relates to this specific issue. I can't say that I've read that anyone has said, "Stay out of the river," as part of those disaster declarations.
So what I would like for you to do is review that and report back to us.
You got it.
If it's not addressed in those disaster declarations, then it falls to the individual property owners, right?
Yes, sir.
And that has, and we need to be able to let the property owners know if that is the, the legal state of affairs or if it's covered by the disaster declarations. We had this come up on, on the autopsy issue.
Yes, sir.
And, and I reported to the governor that I didn't think I had the authority to tell them that they couldn't order autopsies. And he said he thought he did, and it turned out he did. And so on this one, uh, I'd like for you, as our county attorney, to read it and tell us, if it's included by the disaster declaration, ma'am, then you're stuck. But if it's not in the disaster declarations, then it's going to fall back probably to this court as a whole, all five of us, as to what we do about that, if you think that's a health safety and welfare concern.
Okay.
And I, I understand where you're coming from, but we just need some clarification as to, uh, you're asking what you can do, and we don't know, but we will find out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think we can at least point out that we had a discussion in our last commissions' court meeting, and at least the sheriff's office will no longer be advising people that they can't.
Right, right. We act in good faith under advisory, and, uh, we, we've talked, she's very helpful, very nice about it, but we're, we're not doing that anymore.
Right. So, I mean, it goes back to property rights, and, you know, if, if you and your best judgment, looking at all the data and information that you have available, have determined that it's safe enough from your liability standpoint with your renters, then you have the right to, they can be in the water or on the water, but.
This was a twofold question, though, because it says on here either private or public. So we need to know where we're going to be on our.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think as far as the public use of, of our portions of the river, this court gets to decide that.
Correct.
Very important item. Appreciate it being brought up.
And if it is closed, like if the park, Lions Park is closed, then it could be closed too early, like there's no equipment, they don't want public to be there while there's big equipment there, although it's kind of cool and very educational, and we're usually plotting them as they come up and down. But if it needs to be closed at that time, then I say maybe just like a, you know, road closed type sign you can put up so that you know and can go accordingly without being in the water.
I agree with you, but, you know, we have never closed the park officially. We closed the road when it was flooded and covered.
And people down there fishing.
It's been open for quite a while, and people have been using the park in the water, so.
To be continued.
So this is to be continued. Okay. Okay. This was supposed to happen a long time ago, uh, but item one point four is to consider to discuss and take appropriate action regarding a plan for developing and operating a flood warning system for Kirk County. Mr. Moser.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Commissioners. I appreciate the time. Can you have the first chart, please? In the, uh, in the web background, um, I was county commissioner from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and twenty, um, and prior to that in my life, I was a project manager at NASA on the Apollo program, space shuttle program, and space station program. So I've got some familiarity with engineering projects, and what we're discussing today is an engineering project. We approved a flood warning system, or looked to improve a flood warning system in two thousand and fifteen, in two thousand and sixteen because of what happened in the Blanco River. We had an international, an interlocal agreement at that time between the county, UGRA, and the city to develop a plan to improve our flood warning system. The first phase of that plan was developed by Hewitt Engineering, did a great job. We planned to go to phase two. That didn't happen because we were looking for funds from a grant, two grants were applied for but were not received. So we put it in a bets at, at that time. The proposed, excuse me, go to the next chart, please. The proposed flood warning plan is, I'm going to say this very carefully, is to develop a unified flood warning system with separate modules, and I'll talk more about those modules as I progress through this presentation. In any project of this type, whether it be space shuttle or whatever, it's in phases. Phase A is the concept. For example, in the shuttle, it said, "Develop a reusable transportation system to take goods from, from Earth to low Earth orbit." The second phase was the definition, which we looked at hundreds of different types of configurations to do that. We decided on one, which is a space shuttle, if you've seen it today. The next phase then was to develop those individual modules, the space, the orbiter, the shuttle tank, and the rockets, okay? So those, those were the modules, and then operate and maintain it. So I'm going to talk today a little bit about a proposed, uh, organization of how we can do this and proceed forward, and some roles and responsibility and a recommendation. Next chart, please. During the, during phase A, which is the concept, I've drafted something here which I think captures what this system could do, and that would be the flood warning system, to establish and maintain a flood warning system with automated capability. Come back to that. That provides adequate warning of an impending life-threatening threat, flood, in sufficient time to reach safety for people that could be affected. And by sufficient time, I would envision something like no less than fifteen minutes when you know a flood is getting ready to happen for people to reach safe grounds. Next chart, please. Phase B, that's the definition. That's, that's where you establish requirements for what the flood warning system is going to be. That's, that's a big effort, and I'll talk more in that about detail. It's, it's a big effort, and it could be done by a team of people, a small team of people, which I'll delineate a little bit later. The first thing to do that this team is establishing requirements is gather lessons learned. Listen to other communities that have gone through what Kerrville just went through or Kirk County just went through, what it went through in seventy-eight, eighty-seven, and I understand there was even a flood like this same magnitude in thirty-two. I don't know that for sure, but I, I think that there was. But North Carolina has gone through it, Colorado has gone through it, New Mexico's gone through it. All these communities have been through that, experienced it and learned, so we ought to listen to them and understand what they've done to benefit from that. There are candidate systems, I think I've seen ten or fifteen proposals that have been sent in, okay, that says, "Here's what could be done." People have really good ideas. During this definition phase, listen to those people, okay? Gather the information and then decide what it should be. Examples of what requirements could be at the top level is being able to predict the flood before the rain ever falls. That's based on National Weather Service information. And do that with high confidence, with like seventy-five percent confidence that you know there's going to be a flood just based on what the weather prediction is. Improve that confidence by measured rain data. There's many, many rain gauges throughout the county that can be used to, to take the next step of saying, "Let's, let's say with confidence now, there's going to be a flood based on the, on the rain data." And then the last thing is, what's happening in the river? The actual stream flow, velocities, and height. Now you're up to probably a ninety-nine percent confidence there's going to be a flood. Then the other key requirement is, on a system like this, what's the availability? That means, when is that system available to do what it's supposed to do? It ought to be like ninety-nine percent available to do what it needs to do with the reliability of about ninety-nine percent. So how long would this take to do something like this? Probably less than six months. You could set a goal of saying, "Let's complete this by the end of the year," establishing all these requirements, but this, this is a, this would be a big effort to establish the requirements to do it properly. Uh, I'm not an advocate, from my experience, of saying, "Let's put sirens every two miles on the river." That may be the right answer, I don't know, okay? Let's determine how to do it. And a big part of it is, can we do this automatically, automatedly, okay? And to do that would be taking data, putting it into a model, predicting what's going to happen, and then with that capability of identifying a potential flood coming to automatically set off the alarm system. Now, there could be an entered, somebody could inter, check themselves into that and stop the alarm from going off, but don't rely on, on somebody receiving a phone call and then call somebody else to make it happen, okay? Phase C, next chart, please, is, that's the development. That's the, that's where you actually build the system. That, that's a, that's a year-long plus effort to do that, to put in all these warning systems and the. capability to predict. And I think the first thing you do there is to get an integrating contractor, okay? To look at this total system, to look what's going to be done, and I'll talk more about the modules in just a second. But then part of that is develop RFPs, Request for Proposals, for people to come in and establish a module for predicting what I just said, where you take the data from the Weather Bureau, the measured rain data, blah, 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 and predict that there's actually going to be a flood. The next part of the module is projection. That means submitting the warning to the public and everybody else. And then to, currently on this thing about predicting, UGRA has a contract existing with Kister. I think that would be a key part, could be a key part. Ingram, they think they know how to do the warning system, okay? Maybe that's right, maybe it's wrong, but they ought to develop what they think is right, okay? And to do that, total system development and implementations probably in a year-plus. Next chart, please. Phase D, that's the operations. That's not to be overlooked, because you can build the greatest system in the world, but if you don't have it available and reliable for its operation when it's needed, then it's useless. And it could be expensive to do that continuous maintenance and operations of facility like that. Part of operations is training of emergency personnel and a continued maintenance upgrade. Next chart, please. A way to do, or suggestion on how to do this, is have principal organizations. To me, there's like about four organizations that would be involved in this, the county, UGRA, City of Kerrville, City of Ingram, okay? Can other people be there? Probably so, but if you can establish an interlocal agreement like we had in 2016 with these entities, then it can be made to happen. There should be some project management or project management team working with a project manager, and the project management team then would be represented, have representatives from each one of the four organizations to manage the project, always reporting back to the parent organizations, okay? And then there's administration that would be required of legal accounting, et cetera, et cetera. For suggested roles and responsibilities, the next chart, please. For UGRA, I could see they would have the module, I'm going to keep using that word, module for predicting the flood, using the models that I described. And to be clear on that, what I'm talking about is having topographical models of the entire county digitized, you can superimpose on that predicted rain or measured rain, okay, and then predict where the flood is going to be. It may be in Verde Creek and not in South Fork or North Fork. We've already experienced that in the county in the past, where it flooded in Verde Creek but no place else. So, predict with those modules what could be done. And then for Kerr County, the module for projecting the warning system in non-incorporated areas, whether it's sirens, cell phones, et cetera, et cetera. That needs to be done. And then somebody needs to be responsible for the unification, that means the integration of all these prediction methods and all the warning methods. The City of Kerrville could develop the project, the module, excuse me, for the projection in the city limits of Kerrville, and the same thing for Ingram and the City of Ingram. Next chart, please. A little bit more detail on UGRA is develop and maintain the prediction capability module, okay, using a hydraulic model, and I'm repeating myself now, using input data from rain, predicted rain, et cetera, water levels, and then to have the system, but the system there has to be compatible with the warning systems throughout the county. Kerr County, next chart, please. Develop and maintain the production, projection capability in areas that are not in the incorporated areas, but using this type of thing, use highly reliable audible, visual capabilities, telephone, television, emergency messaging system, et cetera, to project that warning. Another key part that was looked at in Phase One of the study in 2016 was the low water crossings. I think the county has 29. So, what do you do with each one of those low water crossings? Do you put alarms? Do you put a barriers? Do you put a personnel? To be determined, and that's what the Phase B of that should be. And then warn people downstream, okay? We've got to warn all the folks in Kendall County and Comal County, so forth, that we're sending water their way, okay? And then provide the overall integration management. Next chart, please. City of Kerrville, in summary, they would develop their own projection capability. They would do what's necessary for the roads and bridges in their area and their municipality, and then make sure that their projection system is compatible with the prediction system. And then the same type of thing for Ingram, okay, within their municipality, okay? Skip all the way to the last chart, if you will. On the recommendation is, it's a big first step, okay, in defining the requirements. And the way I would recommend to the court to consider is have a project later. I'd be happy to lend my experience to that pro bono. It's going to be a big effort, but I think it's a worthwhile effort. Have one member from each of the other, from all four entities, counties, cities, both cities and UGRA, and develop the requirements, which would be like Phase B, and create a draft interlocal agreement, then that can be used then to implement this type of thing. So, people have said, "Well, what do you think this is going to cost?" I think the total system, total county of everything I've described, including advanced modeling, very, very fast computers. Let me add one other thing. I mentioned a while ago that the idea would be to provide a warning to people very quickly so they've got 15 minutes' warning. And to me, that's a fast turnaround, which would take some big computing capability, okay? City, county, we don't have that here, but so we'd have to figure out how to do that. I think Rice University has got a system by which they think they're good at that, okay? I'm not certain, but that'd be the thing to determine. But to do that in such a way that it can be implemented very, very quickly and effectively. So, probably in the neighborhood, I'd say $5 million or less, probably less than that to develop this whole system and have it in place. So, it's a complex project. It's not a huge project. It's an important project, so hopefully this is something that we can take the next step and protect people as quickly as possible. So, maybe the next flood will never come along in our lifetime, but we ought to be prepared if it does. Could we save everybody's life with this? I don't know. You probably couldn't reach 100% of the people in time, but you could probably reach 90% of them in time for them to get to safety. So, that's what I have to say. All I can say is, let's roll.
That's it. You just heard him. He's had that conversation with me no less than four times, I know.
Right.
We have. And he started very early on, and for those of you that don't know, Commissioner Moser, or have worked with Commissioner Moser, that's who he is. And I say that as a compliment, Tom. But we've got all kinds of people talking about this, and something has to be done. And it's time to do it. And we talk about the team approach, you know, it's like herding cats. We've got to have somebody from Ingram, we've got to have somebody from the city. The city's relying more on the legislature than to do this than... We had a meeting with Dr. Rector and Ray Howard from Ingram, who's on the council there, and Chris Moser. We did that one on the 15th, I think it was.
Correct.
And I listened to him for an hour, and all kinds of great ideas. And they asked me at the end what I thought. I told them what I thought was, we need to put together the plan and go to one donor, whether it's the foundation, the community foundation or what have you, and get this thing done for all these different stakeholders. So, we need an interlocal agreement. People, this is day 52. Search and rescue dominated us the first weeks of the flood. Recovery has just been rumbling down the highways for us. It's time for us to start coming up with the solutions. How did this flood happen? We tried several times, several times, to get somebody to partner with us for the grant money to put it in, and it didn't happen any of those times. Now is the time, period. And putting together a team like this, I'm going to make a motion that we do that, to get this thing started, to get some sort of command, somebody to spearhead it, take the ball and run with it. We can't just sit around saying, "Oh, well, we need to get around to that. We need to do this right now. We need to have this in place before next summer." We need to be able to entice our tourism business and campers' business back to Kerr County next year and tell them, "We got a state-of-the-art flood warning system." That's all I got to say.
Something key, it's all fresh on our mind that it hit the headwaters of Guadalupe this time, but like you said, it could be Johnson Creek next time, Verde Creek, Turtle Creek. We've got enough creeks that flood periodically, so no telling where it's going to hit. The Guadalupe goes through the whole county, so it affects all of our precincts.
So, what's your motion? Okay. I move that a team be formed to develop the concept slash goal and definitions slash requirements, as he outlined in his presentation there, for a unified Kerr County flood warning system. The team would consist of five members, a leader, and I'm good at asking Commissioner Moser to do that, and one member from UGRA, Kerr County, City of Kerrville, and City of Ingram. And the team should present a plan of operations for the four organizations within one month. It's time we hear something, and should target completing the work within six months. That's my motion.
I will second that.
Yeah, discussion.
Yeah. Question is, who else from the county is, is this a Charlie Hastings thing, or is this one of the Commissioners?
No, no, it's one of the Commissioners, and right off the bat, I won on that. But then I thought, with your background and sharing mine, I'd like to see you.
I'd be happy to do it.
Background or mind?
Well, the lesser of two either.
This has to be done. Last week, we held a press conference with the governor and released $40 million from the Community Foundation for Housing Purposes, getting people back in their homes. And the governor had been writing us for two weeks to get that done. And I won't give you all the details, but I called and told him that them kid was coming, and he was a hatchet man, and there would be blood. And we got it done. We need to get this done. These are essential things that we have to do.
I agree.
I'm worried about the budget, but people's lives are more important than our budget.
I know.
And this has to be top on our priority list.
We'll find the money.
And we'll find it. It's there.
Just a comment, thank you for stepping up and volunteering to do this. I can't think of no better person to lead this, because you've already seen two big disasters in your career, Apollo, the fire, and also the Challenger. You lived through both.
Right.
Right? And this is now one you're still living through, and you're willing to do that. But I also am very mindful that Senate Bill Three is going to inform a lot of our actions that we've seen. And with Texas Water Development Board, we probably need to think about some local member for that as well, you know, on our group, to be informed by what they're trying to do.
Well, my suggestion on that is, is develop what you think the requirements are, okay? Don't ignore that, but at the same time, you know, be able to use that to the advantage of Kerr County.
Yes, sir. Your methodology is great. Love it. Thank you. And as you can go, lessons learned on the Comfort 1978 book, written by Betty Murray. Great book. There's not a lot of copies of it. I still got one, I have to give back to her, but it also talks about maintenance every single year, and they know about this more than I do, about the incurring
Sure.
...cost on just the sirens and the systems. And they did this outside of the county. I don't know if you know that, but they did. And there's a lot of local people that got together and made that happen. We are fortunate to have state money, county approval to do this, and I think it'll happen faster. The only thing I'm asking, it's very well federated between the different sirens and systems. And so, it's a little bit more proactive than having to go to a USGS system and actually get the alerts on your phone.
Right. I think this would be pushing state-of-the-art.
Yeah.
If we can do it, okay? And maybe it'll be a model
You know what to do.
...every place else in Texas and the nation.
You got my right.
We'll use if we can make it happen.
Did we get Tara on this committee, Tara Bushman?
Let them decide who they want to have, the city and, you know. It's important to have, let them choose somebody. But like I say, it's an engineering project.
One talk at a time.
No, it's an engineering project. It's not a political thing. It's engineering-derived requirements.
Now, I have a, Dr. Rector, do you want to address this?
Thank you, Commissioners. Bill Rector, 1425 Harper Road. UGRA is here, we have three members from UGRA in attendance today. We're here to be a team member. We support what Tom Moser has put together, and we are anxious to work with him. That's my only comment.
Okay. Yeah, look, all I wanted to do was
Point out that I attended a meeting in Bandera with, what's the name of their organization? Tara, help me, my memory fails, but...
...
Yeah, thank you. And, you know, they had a lot of good information to share about their flood warning system, and I spoke afterward with Tara, who was also there, and, you know, we have a lot of things in place that are doing some very similar things. There's absolutely no doubt we need to expand on it and add to it, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel either. So, and there are some other lessons learned in terms of the who's watching, who's looking at the data, and how that information gets relayed, that I think are very important lessons learned. So, anyway, I just wanted to make sure that we tap into some of the existing expertise.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Judge, can I clarify, is Commissioner Hakes just going to do a Kirk County representative? Is that part of it?
I meant to, before we voted to insert that.
That's what I thought.
I thought I heard it, so, that's fine.
I think that's what we did.
Moving on. Do we need to take a break?
At some point.
Item 1.5, consider and discuss to take appropriate action to accept donations to Kerr County Animal Services totaling $5,316.54 for the month of July 2025. Reagan Gibbons.
I move for approval.
I second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, a second to donations?
Well, and I would like to say thank you to everybody. You know, we had people come from all over the, all over the United States with, you name it, money, food, everything, and just flew in, so...
Great. All those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Don't leave yet.
1.6, consider and discuss to take appropriate action to award the dog kennel bid for Kerr County Animal Control Facility.
Good morning. Okay, so, on the, as far as the bids go, some of what I did find out, one of the reasons that the gator kennels are such a price difference, I did go see some of these. They're pretty nice, but I'm not sure that they really meet, well, I know they don't meet what we were looking for in the bid. I don't know how long they would last, you know, with the daily wear and tear. I did go and look at VSS kennels as well. I did verify that their cat kennels are really good. I also verified that their dog kennels are really good. I did make an error here, screwed up. I got my numbers crossed somehow, and I found out this actually yesterday, thanks to Mr. Letts. I went and looked at VSS when they were not the next lowest bidder there, so I hate to pass this, but I'd like a little more time to go and look at Stone Mountain, because theirs are actually the next lowest. I'd like to see what those look like as well, and in the process, I might actually go and look at the other ones I didn't look at either. But I need to get back with these companies too and let them know what's going on.
So, you're asking us to pass?
Well, Reagan, let me ask you a quick question. Can we mix and match?
I was going to ask the same.
Can we mix and match dog kennels from one and cat kennels from another?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to get the most bang for the buck here with stuff that we actually, you know, if we, if Stone Mountain turns out to be one that is good, you know, that's actually, it'd be a lower number than what Stone Mountain, if we got everything from them, or if we got everything from TriStar, or from VSS. Since we already did, I believe, commit to getting the VSS cat kennels, which was, they were the lowest bid on the cat kennels, I just want to go see these Stone Mountain ones.
So is that a done deal on the cat kennels? We don't have to decide anything on that?
I believe Senator, Commissioner Letts did want to say some things.
While standing, I think Joe verified it, that y'all made a decision to go with VSS on the cat kennels in July, so that's off the table. The other thing that Reagan didn't mention, well, it's on the handout. To me, the gator kennels just don't even meet the standards, the gator kennels that were specified here, because they're plastic and aluminum, and we specified stainless steel. A little bit of difference there. So if you all were to accept, want to go that direction, I think you have to rebid the whole thing anyway, because this is not fair. But they didn't meet the bid, and they also didn't submit number kennels for some of the cats. The other thing that I wanted to get clarification on, in talking with some of the companies, one of them has offered to reduce their price a little bit. And it's really probably a question for the county attorney, but I wanted to let y'all know, you know, is it possible, at this point, as bid's been received, to let the, kind of notify them if they want to adjust their prices down, give them all the same opportunity? Because one has offered that already.
Wouldn't you have to rebid?
Well, that's what the question to county attorney is. It's probably not, if you give, I think if you give everyone the same opportunity.
I don't know exactly the answer. There's, there is some guidance, and there are rules, but related to that question.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like a very fair bid process. If I see you come in at a price, and I'm going to lower mine now.
But they all get, they all get the opportunity. But anyway, that's just something that's also working while Reagan's going around and look at the Stone Mountain kennels.
If it was the recommended low bidder that wanted to lower the price, I'd be happy to accept that.
It wasn't that one.
So is there anything we need to do today?
No. We're going to pass, and thank you for looking.
Sure.
Before we vote.
Item one point seven.
Judge, before we move off of one point six, and it's not going to be on the agenda, but Charlie is fixing to be sidetracked, and we're going to have to have somebody else handling that. Do we need to do this at a different time? He's not going to be able to continue.
What are you talking about?
He's not going to be able to continue doing all the engineering and overseeing that project.
Yeah, Charlie does a lot of work as a project manager.
So while we're talking about the kennels, is that going to follow to Commissioner Holt, since you're in charge of that now? Yeah. We're going to need some engineering support with that, and I think we could talk about that offline. I don't want to take up court time, but I'm fully aware. I just wanted to be known that something's going to need to be done there.
Right. Good.
It's not an agenda item, so we can't.
Heather didn't stand up.
I was waiting.
Throw her in the towel.
You're fixing to get on to me, I know. I knew when to draw the line.
Item one point seven, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve paying a thirty-five-hundred-dollar deposit to the Hill Country Woodcrafters for new front doors at the Union Church Building. Shane Evans.
Good morning, gentlemen. Yes, where I'm at right now with the doors, before I can go forward with getting any doors, the custom-built doors, I have to get a deposit. This has been the same with, with the other door companies I've contacted. They always wanted the money half down upfront, and would not, we couldn't negotiate around that. And the way the county does things is, they do the work, then we pay them. Before I can give a deposit to any kind of company to go forward with the doors, I have to get permission from Commissioners Court to do so.
Okay. I make a motion that we approve paying a thirty-five-hundred-dollar deposit to Hill Country Woodcrafters as a down payment on the door, front doors at Union Church.
I'll second.
Is this in the budget already?
Yes, I do have the money.
Okay.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. One point eight, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve the interlocal agreements for jail services between Kerr County and Blenko, Medina, Centerpoint, ISD, Ingram, Kimball, Liberty County, and Edwards County.
Yeah, I'm just looking for the court's approval on these inter, interlocal agreements. As I get a handful, I bring with y'all, this is increasing the housing of the inmates, so I just need y'all's approval for this to put in effect.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moving over to item one point twenty-five. Consider to discuss to take appropriate action for the court to set a public hearing for ten a.m. on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, for a revision of plat for Kerrville South Two, Lot Fifty-Eight. Charlie Hastings.
Thank you, Judge. My notes here. This proposal revises and divides Lot, am I looking at this right? Lot Fifty-Eight into two lots. Hold on, I'm looking at the wrong one here. It's mixed up here. Did you call Kerrville South Two?
One twenty-five.
Yeah.
Kerrville South.
Yeah, Lot Fifty-Eight. Okay. It divides Lot Fifty-Eight. It's five point eight-five acres with two existing residences into two lots. Lot Fifty-Eight A will be two point nine-nine-seven acres, and Lot Fifty-Eight B will be two point eight-five-four acres. Frontage for both lots will remain on Lilian Drive. The county engineer requests the court set a public hearing for ten a.m. on October fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, for a revision of plat for Kerrville South Two, Lot Fifty-Eight, Volume Four, Page sixty-four, Precinct One.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? This is just set a public hearing.
Right, public hearing.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item one point two-six, consider to discuss to take appropriate action regarding an amending plat for the Horizon Section One, Lots Fifty-One and Fifty-Two.
Okay. Yeah, I've got everything lined out. This proposal adjusts boundary lines between existing lots. New lots will be created. Lot Fifty-One R will be five point two-three acres, and Lot Fifty-Two R will be nine point eight-three acres. Frontage for both lots will remain on landmark. The county engineer requests the court consider to discuss and take appropriate action regarding an amending plat for the Horizon Section One, Lots Fifty-One and Fifty-Two, Volume Six, Page three twenty-three, Precinct One. And you'll recall that amending plats do not require a public hearing. This is a minor change to a plat. The court adopted the, to allow the procedure for doing amending plats to adjust lot lines between lots.
That's what this is doing.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the amending plat request for the Horizon Section One, Lots Fifty-One and Fifty-Two. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item one point, one point twenty-seven, consider to discuss to take appropriate action for Commissioners Court's approval of two job descriptions in the Road and Bridge Department. Ms. Hoffler.
Good morning. We have someone retiring at the end of the month and another person being promoted. We have before you two job descriptions that we went through and just updated some things. The pay grades have not changed. Both positions are currently in our current budget, so there's no financial impact on any of it. At this time, I asked the Commissioners Court for their approval of the two job descriptions before you.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the job descriptions as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
We're going to pass on that next one.
You're going to pass on one twenty-eight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So we'll go to item one point twenty-nine, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to authorize Road and Bridge Administrator to exempt Road and Bridge employees from the two-B, three-Ahch provision of the Kerr County Employees Handbook related to limitation of three hundred and twenty hours of carryover paid time off during the period of the disaster declared on July four, twenty twenty-five, and extended on July seven, twenty twenty-five by order of Kerr County Commissioners Court. Authorization to end on September thirty, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Zapata.
Judge, Commissioners, Ms. Hoffler reached out to me. She had a few employees who are going to be over the three-twenty come next month, and due to their workload because of the flood, and even recently, they have some openings in their department, they, they're not going to be able to burn their time before the end of the fiscal year. So she is just requesting that authorization be given so that they can carry their time over into next year.
For a year.
For a year. She's here to answer questions.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second. To approve the PTO carryover as proposed. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Thank you. Item one point three-zero, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to approve and authorize the county judge to execute the petition of landowner for release of area from the City of Kerrville extraterritorial jurisdiction. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, Judge, we had that prepared last time by our county attorney, and so we're waiting now to see if we've got all the information that we needed, the mapping.
We've got all the information we need, I can give to you. And then I will give you the description, shoot, petition, recording files. So once I've done that, I can give it to the judge for signature.
Good deal.
We've got a requested speaker here. Is Mr. Barudy outside?
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve, was that filing the petition?
It's gone, Judge.
Okay.
This is again on the Youth Events Center.
It is, to remove us from the ETJ. We had to get the mapping.
River Park.
Leave Oklahoma's office.
We didn't approve it last time, or?
No, we approved the county attorney to fill out paperwork. And then we needed to get the accompanying paperwork and stuff to go with it.
And this is going to be for the actual filing of petition, execution of petition?
Yes, sir.
So, a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item one thirty-one, consider to discuss to take appropriate action to complete the Region Six Disaster Recovery Center Pre-identification Checklist Inspection Form.
We can pass on that.
Okay.
We're going to take a break at some point here? It's almost noon. Five minutes?
Okay. Court will take a five-minute recess. Court will come back to order. Next item on the agenda is 1.32. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed interlocal agreement for the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office by and between the state of Texas and the counties of Mandera, Gillespie, Kendall, Kerr, and Medina for the fiscal year 2526, and the interlocal agreement for the mental health program of the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office.
This is just an annual deal, isn't it?
Yep.
All right, I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the interlocal agreement for the Hill Country Regional Public Defender's Office as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.33. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the contract with the Divide Volunteer Fire Department.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.34. Consider discuss and take appropriate action regarding the status of the repairs for Kate Loop Bridge.
I don't know if we're just someone update here, but I think I kind of gave that a while ago already.
You did.
Should be adequate.
I think so. We'll just pass.
Pass. Item 1.35. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to ratify and confirm updated preliminary cost estimate for the repair of Kate Loop Bridge that was damaged during the flooding disaster. Original amount as approved by the court order 41427 was $1,170,206.38. The new preliminary cost estimate as of August 8, 2025 is $1,414,103. Ms. Butler.
And as of this last week, it is now $500,000 or $600,000. So this again has changed, so we're basically just ratifying that old amount. There's another meeting today that Charlie will be in about four that we will get more concise numbers, I believe. He's got more plans he's working on. This is just cleaning up.
So really what we're doing is ratifying the...
It's the last thing that we had to sign, but it has again changed.
Yes.
But we haven't changed it yet, so we're not asking to sign for anything yet.
Then we can pass.
So we pass?
Yes.
Well, do these have court orders? We kind of, we kind of need to... Yes. So... I'll be coming back.
What was already done is already approved at 1.17.
At this point.
And that was prior, that was prior to FEMA recognizing the efforts that Charlie had put in for the reconstruction, and now they're accepting our scope.
Okay.
What number are you looking for?
Well, we're looking for, all we're asking to do here, this is a motion to ratify and confirm what has already been done. That was, I was asked to submit this on an emergency basis for that 1.17.
Zero. Yeah. Well, that's already been done though, I thought.
Well, we're gonna ratify that it's done, but it's got a legal change.
I'm making a motion to approve ratifying, confirming the update that we put into effect on call estimates as of August the 8th to 1.414103.
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. We gotta pass that one.
Thank you. I'll be back again.
I understand why you're doing that.
Well, the whole project is fixing to change, okay?
Well, I know.
But we, but we already took an action, so we had to ratify what we did.
We took an action to go to 1.4?
Yeah, we did.
We did.
All right.
Yeah. And you were here.
You sure?
Yeah.
Next item is 1.36. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to surplus 33 chairs from the Ag Extension Office.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.37. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to allow use of the courthouse grounds for a car show on September 27, 2025. This car show was previously approved to use Flat Rock Park on July 19th, and...
Greg, Mr. Linkin will be here? So because we're not able to still use Flat Rock Park for a big event, he's asked that it be moved to the courthouse on September 27th. He does plan to have trash cans as well as porta-potties delivered the morning of the event, and they will be gone by the end of the event, or as soon as the event's over.
I move for approval.
I second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the use of courthouse grounds for the car show on September 27th as presented.
What stops them from using Flat Rock Park right now?
Uh, there's nothing that I can think of, but...
I mean, the road's a little torn up, but if they really wanted to use it...
Well, it sounds like they're geared up, already got plans for here, so let's let them. And that's a good event. They probably draw more if it's right here in the middle town.
I'm okay either way, but I'm just saying that...
There's not.
Any other discussion?
Nope.
Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. We're sold out for the next three agenda items. 1.38. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize overtime pay instead of compensatory time earned for hours worked for all non-exempt employees for hours worked over 40 hours directly related to responding to the July 4 flooding disaster for pay periods through September 6, 2025.
So I neglected to put an item on the agenda, the last court date to request for this current pay period. And really, I'm just bringing it back to you so you guys can make decisions on how long we're gonna continue to pay out overtime. I can tell you that the estimated overtime for this payroll that we're currently processing that ended this last weekend has about 204 hours of overtime, 10 employees, so it is going down drastically from the last two that I told you about, the first two of these employees, these 10 employees that are using the emergency pay codes. Six are with the sheriff's office, and I'm told that because there's still recovery efforts, there are still deputies out there working these and working overtime.
How long do we foresee that needs to continue?
Well, this is September 6th.
So I'm asking, because normally if I had gotten it on last payroll and you approved it, then I would be back here today asking for the next one coming up. That's why I've got it going through September 6th.
Well, you think the sheriff should be wrapped up with your extra...
I know primarily the ones being used are with Miller, because you know, we're still running seven days a week on the recovery efforts. So, you know, that's a hard question to answer. Hopefully soon.
Right.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the additional overtime as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.39. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve Kerr County investment policy and broker-dealer list for Kerr County's investment policy in accordance with the Public Funds Investment Act.
This is something that I bring to you annually. I did make a few updates to the policy itself, really just to comply with the current Public Funds Investment Act, not because there were any changes in legislation, just to clarify language, and I gave you a summary page of that. I can go over it if you want me to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the latest Kerr County investment policy as submitted.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the updated investment policy at Kerr County. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Item 1.40. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to ratify and confirm a memorandum of understanding between Family Endeavors and Kerr County for temporary storage of general supplies and emergency management equipment for disaster response and recovery operations as a result of the July 4, 2025 flood.
So we did secure a 100 pallet warehouse in San Antonio, and in order to get that with endeavors, I had the judge sign it. It's no cost to the county, so he did sign that contract, and I'm just, just like the one of the prior agenda items, just bringing it to ratify.
Motion approved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the MOU between Family Endeavors and Kerr County for the storage for the disaster supplies.
Quick question. Are we actually using it? Are we storing stuff there right now?
We don't have anything there yet, but we will be using it at some point, probably moving some of the existing things we currently have to make room for building supplies.
Any other discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.41. Consider discuss and approve the polling locations in accordance with Chapter 43 of the Texas Election Code for the November 2025 election.
Good morning, gentlemen. This is the polling locations for the November 4th election, for the constitutional, and all of precinct ones would be at Riverside Church on Harper Road, 625 Harper Road. All of precinct twos would be at the Union Church, three at the First Baptist Church on 625 Washington Street, and then all the fours would be at the West Kerr Annex.
And this is just constitutional.
This is November.
Yeah.
Yes. There will be a divide ISD bond election.
Okay. I move for approval.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the location of the polling places for the November election.
This is just on election day, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.42. Consider discuss and approve the appointment of election judges and alternates for a term of one year to begin September 1, 2025, to August 31, 2026, in accordance with the Texas Election Code, Section 32.
Yes, this is what is done every year. We get the election judges from the Republican Party. That's the, the governor is the Republican Party in the, in there, and then the Democrats are the alternate judge. We do this every year.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the appointment of the election judges and alternates for a term of one year as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Moving on to item 1.43. Consider discuss and approve the appointment of early voting ballot board judge and alternate judge in accordance with the Texas Election Code, Section 87.002. Consider and set the number of members to be appointed by the early voting ballot board judge.
Yes, this is, this is a yearly thing done that for their appointment for the early voting ballot board and the alternate judge, and to set up to six clerks for the November election.
Are these also basically coming from each of the...
These are coming from each of the parties, yes. The party each gives us one name.
I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the appointment of the early voting ballot board judge and alternate judge as presented. Any discussions? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 1.44. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to approve the central counting station personnel pursuant to Chapter 127.005 of the Texas Elections Code.
This is the central count station, people that will work election night. The judge and the alternate judge names do come from the party also, and then these are other clerks and individuals that work in the county elections department or in my office that help out that night.
I move for approval.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the central counting station personnel pursuant to the Elections Code as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.45. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to authorize the county judge to execute a mural agreement with TextDOT for the installation and long-term maintenance of murals within the State's Right-of-Way located at FM 480 and Swayze Street in Center Point. Mr. Francis.
Yeah, you should have all received a packet of information about this item, and I have two individuals who are really spearheading this thing, Kim Oliver and Joey Story. And basically, this is an attempt to beautify Center Point on the right-of-way as you're coming up the bridge into Center Point where there's a lot of traffic because you've got Zansenberg Tavern and a number of other businesses right there, and, you know, people are going 40 mile an hour on the bridge, and then suddenly it becomes 30 mile an hour, and frankly, they don't slow down fast enough. So, one of the ideas behind the murals, as I said, both beautification and safety, trying to get them to slow down, so...
An enticement.
Yes. An enticement. Anyway. So, they have already sought out the process and talked with TextDOT, and there is actually an agreement that has to be signed by the county with TextDOT. County attorney's familiar with this. You know, it can't be signed by an individual. It has to be signed by the county. But then our county attorney is looking at having kind of a back-to-back agreement with, in this case, it will now be Kim Oliver, who will provide the assurance for all costs and maintenance of the murals, and at some point in time, painting over them or whatever to, when they're no longer suitable to remain.
So, the agreement that we got today is the one that Mr. Francis provided, and this one we've established, we will attach eventually the mural proposal, once they've got that design created and ready to go, we'll attach that, and so then TextDOT will execute their portion of the agreement. But this, we wanted to go ahead and get it before the court so that we could show that our citizens that we have, that they have support from the court to do this and get started on what they need to do to show you guys what that mural project's going to look like.
Correct. Thank you. Because they're gonna have a competition for both the slogan and the actual murals, both of which have to be approved by both TextDOT and this court, so it's gonna come back to us. So what we're looking for today is an in-principle approval to allow them to go ahead with the slogan and the contest, basically.
And you can approve this contract if you'd like today, and then once the project, you've got a project design, you can enter into that agreement with them, and we'll attach, attach it to this agreement and forward it off to TextDOT if you'd like to do that today.
So we need a motion, I guess. I will make a motion that the court authorize the county judge to execute a mural agreement with TextDOT for the installation and long-term maintenance of a mural, it's actually two murals, within the State's Right-of-Way located at FM 480 and Swayze Street in Center Point, and eventually a back-to-back agreement with Kim Oliver.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to enter into the mural agreement as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
So that was easy?
Item 1.46. Consider discuss and take appropriate action to ratify and confirm the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency License Use Agreement. Use of real property facilities to allow relocation of the DRC, the Disaster Recovery Center, to the Hill Country Youth Ranch Center. Mr. Jones.
This is the reason we passed on that last one, because we ended up, the DRC needed to be relocated, they had to do it a lot quicker than we thought we would have to, because over at First Baptist Church where they had it, they had to start school there. And so we scrambled, we located several locations, we had the previous one on the agenda, thinking that would be one we would go look at and see if it was suitable. In the meantime, they contacted us and said, hey, we just need to be over there at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. They came in with a crew of people, they looked at it, they said it looked great, and so they are now operating, so this is more forgiveness.
Which part are they in? Yeah.
They're where the lunchrooms were at, where you...
That far side?
Far west side.
Yeah, far west side. Yeah, and they've got it all spread out, so we've got the, our P.I. has been getting the message out, they're, they should, well, they're fully functional operational for Friday evening. So it's, it's, it's good.
It is a primo rentable space on that side, and they're paying...
Well, they, yeah, they, it's part of our original agreement with them. But, but they, they did make constellations for us because we know we've still got a gun show coming up, and, and, you know, we, they worked hand-in-hand with Jake to make sure that he could still get that in there, and, and so they're, they're being very, very cooperative with us on all of it, to accomplish all of it, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Jones, does this have anything to do with what you had discussed earlier about 550 Earl Garrett?
For that one, yeah. But that was gonna be more short-term, more short-term use, because this will go away in, in, probably end of September, maybe.
Hard to say.
This is short-term stuff.
Okay. And as far as Earl Garrett goes, we're trying to maintain the unity of that as long as possible.
Right.
We need to break it up piece by piece as we can.
Right.
Got a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make a motion to approve the action to authorize the judge to execute, oh, I'm reading the wrong one, to ratify and confirm the use of the Hill Country Youth Event Center for the use of the Disaster Recovery Center.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Item 1.47. Consider discuss and take action to authorize the county judge to sign Fortinet Software Support Renewal. Discussion will center on one-year or three-year renewals. Mr. Dennis.
Good afternoon, Court. It's come time to renew our software support for our physical infrastructure throughout the county. Seventy-four pieces of equipment, firewall switches and telephone equipment, thank you. There's a one-year and a three-year agreement there in front of you. This was budgeted for the next fiscal year. They are offering a substantial discount if we go with the three-year. It's actually a $68,582 savings if we do a three-year commitment to them.
Say that number again.
$68,582.
And what are the payment terms if we go with the three-year? Do we have to pay it all upfront, or can we...
If we do, if we do go with a, with a three-year payment term, it is at an 8% interest. I do have money in my next year's budget that I could actually cover it, I just will have to refocus some of my efforts that I had originally planned on.
So what do you want to do? What's your recommendation?
I would recommend doing the three-year.
So we're gonna do a three-year contract and pay it in two?
One lump sum.
With the savings of 68,582.
Corey, is this who we've been using before?
Yes and no. The physical hardware is what we've had in place now for the last few years. Much like Microsoft and Dell, Fortinet, you have to go through a, another vendor to do that. This number actually is, with the new vendor that we are utilizing, Weaver Technologies, it actually is quite a bit cheaper than what we went through before.
Okay.
No, this is just a standard software renewal. It's...
But is it for you? We have to make sure the appropriate language is in there so that the court can...
It's just equipment renewal. It's, it's firmware upgrades and regular stuff.
You approved it today and conditioned on our review, and so let us have a look at it, because I understand what you're saying, but if there's not, not appropriation language in there, then it doesn't protect the county the way you want it to. So just let us have a look.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to authorize county judge to sign the Fortinet Software Support Renewal for a three-year... renewal for a three-year renewal, but this is based on conditions of legal review.
Yes, ma'am. That works.
Okay.
Saving us money.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous.
I.
Approval agenda, 2.1, budget amendments.
And you have 21 budget adjustments. The majority of them are line item transfers. And you have two or three in here just that are related to the flood and trying to get more money into the places that are needing it to cover those expenses. We also have one where there's new revenue because of insurance proceeds for a vehicle repair.
I move for approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve the budget amendments as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.2, pay bills.
Yes, invoices for today's consideration, $1,458,894.85.
Motion approved.
A second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.3, late bills.
Yes, invoices for late bills today amounted to $11,211.52.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the late bills as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.4, auditor reports.
Yes, just a couple items, just an FYI, the SAM registration, which is the system for award management. We have to apply every year or have it renewed every year so we can go out for grants. That has been done. And the second thing is we performed audits for the, just said the piece, precinct one, and for animal control services, and we're asking that you accept the reports.
I move that we approve the audit reports as presented.
Second.
And second, any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.5, accept monthly reports.
Okay, for May, June, July 2025, monthly report, Veterans Service Office Director Kenneth Sanchez. April through June of 2025, quarterly report, Veterans Service Office Director Kenneth Sanchez. June 2025, payroll report, County Treasurer Tracy Sullivan. July 2025, Auditor's Office, County Auditor Tanya Shelton. Environmental Health at Animal Services, Director Reagan Givens. County Treasurer's Office, County Treasurer Tracy Sullivan. I move for approval.
Second.
A motion and a second to accept the monthly reports as presented. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. 2.6, court orders. I have reviewed court orders number 41423 through 41447, and they appear to be in order. I move that they be approved.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise your hand. Unanimous. Okay. Moving on to stats reports from department heads. No department heads? Stats reports from elected officials? No. You do?
Okay.
I was asked at one of the last budget hearings about number of volunteer hours and donations and what that looked like for our cost share. So I have it broken down for you on that page that I just gave to you. This is calculated by TIDAM through July 28. It's still very early. They haven't confirmed all of these numbers. But as far as donations go, in-kind goods are approximately valued at $30,550. And in-kind services are approximately $476,750, totaling $506,625. There's some unclaimed numbers in there too in TCR, and the Salvation Army is still calculating their donations, so that number will change. Meals total reported served are $568,731. The soft cost value is $5 per meal, so that's 2.8 million. Mercy Chef's numbers are not included in those figures, but the last report I received from them was 7,536 cumulative hours of volunteer time and 101,244 cumulative meals served, and they're still operating. So that figure will also go up or change. Volunteers registered in TCR since the beginning is 18,258. Total work orders completed, 6,988 work orders. Total hours entered into TCR is 130,444. And so they broke out Kirk County from city of Kerrville, which is that first number you have there, 68,327 hours. And they averaged, or they say $32 per hour, which means 2.2, almost 2.2 million dollars in value for our cost match. So with those preliminary numbers, the estimate of our cost share looks to be approximately 5.5 million. And then I also have some invoices that have been submitted for in-kind services for engineering and some cleanup, and that was just under 213,000, which would also go towards our cost share. I also have a report, I just received an email this morning from the Curry DC, and this is, you don't have that because I just got this this morning, but this is situation reports from the long-term recovery group and the volunteer organizations that are reporting. So clients and households served from all of these partners, 13,972. And you just need to recognize some of those might overlap, so they might be serving the same people. Volunteers deployed over 180. Volunteer hours contributed 300, I'm sorry, 33,540. Common themes identified, housing and rebuilding support, so temporary housing, major home repairs and rebuild projects. Basic needs and financial assistance, distribution of gift cards, food, clothing, hygiene supplies, and gas vouchers have been, has been a critical component of immediate relief. Several partners also noted ongoing support for lost wages, utilities, and emergency expenses. Mental and emotional and spiritual care. Faith-based partners are offering counseling, grief support groups, and pastoral care. And that is being emphasized alongside housing and financial needs to go along with the mental health that you said, Judge. Volunteer mobilization, partners are coordinating volunteer teams. They have been for muck and gut, home repairs, and donation management. And then collaboration and partnerships. Many partners are working closely with churches and other nonprofits and the long-term recovery group to coordinate resources. And a consistent theme they've been finding with the community is just trusting local organizations acting as connectors for the national VODs.
Excellent report.
Thank you.
Just a question, Tracy. What is the unclaimed donations in TCR?
Those are donations reported, but I probably can't really answer that question. I think just not being verified.
I guess, I mean, how likely are?
You've got a lot of stuff out, you've got a lot of stuff out there that could be claimed as donations, but nobody's able to verify who they were made to.
Made to or made by?
Isn't that about correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can't really claim it ourselves.
But these, so it's probably going to be a good year before we have a real number on that, and it's because of trying to verify that those items were actually donated. And so along those lines, I'll give you a quick warehouse update as well. We do have one functioning warehouse that I would really like to get rid of and taken off my plate. But TIDAM has been supplying everything out there for us, and they will probably be deploying all of that equipment later this week. So we have secured an IT company that came in. I met them yesterday, and they installed a laptop, a printer, and a hotspot so that warehouse, the warehouse can still function. And I just secured this morning a truck, a company that will provide a box truck and a driver two times per week to continue to get donations out to the organizations that need them. And I'm waiting, I have a request in from 2HEB. I received an email today that they would get back to me to advise if they can help in providing equipment for the warehouse, such as forklifts, pallet jacks, and hand trucks, all of which we currently have, but they are going to go away later this week.
Okay. Thank you. 3.3, staff support from liaisons.
I'm looking forward to Wednesday's meeting with UGRA. They're gone, so. But that's going to be a very interesting meeting. But all my liaisons are doing great work. All the folks I work with, they're doing phenomenal work across the county.
Believe it or not, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. Animal Control Center keeps going up. If you have not had a chance, do recommend you drive by and see that's gone vertical. Now we're just choosing colors, which is a good place to be as things continue on for that build, which as you know, is rolled to the right a little bit to January to be finished by November, so.
All I got is, y'all know we'll be interviewing our extension agent tomorrow. That's it.
What I would report is DPS wants to go ahead and close checkpoint on 39 and open it up.
I'm good with that.
Well, it's time.
Right.
We just have to do it.
The only caveat to that is we straightened up with the contractors as far as we had reported a truck going across, but there was also like a dump truck of somebody's that went across that bridge. And DPS was able to kind of watch that. So we still could have some problems in that regard.
And other than that, I'm going to be in Austin at the legislative update, and I'm doing a juvenile hearing and a juvenile court meeting. That's it. So keep all that stuff going. And I'm not going to be able to be here for the workshop on Thursday. I'll be, I'll be in Austin, just so everybody knows.
Okay, anything else? Being nothing else, we are adjourned.
Executive session?
Executive.
Oh. Too bad.
Hey, you already hit the gap.
Okay. We're back in order. Item 4.1, which is an executive closed session.
This is here and reserve some sewer projects.